Good evening, everyone. Today is September twentieth, two thousand twenty-two. This is a special meeting of the Cupertino City Council prior to the regular meeting. And right now it is five thirty P M. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct the meeting?
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Uh, Councilmember Way. I do not see that Councilmember Way has logged in yet. Councilmember Willie?
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow?
Here.
Mayor Paul?
Here.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. And so on our special meeting agenda tonight, we have one item, and I believe that our city manager Pamela Wu would like to kick us off.
Sure, thank you, Mayor. So tonight, the first item, the study session, is to talk about the potential S B nine ordinance. We do have the Community Development Department team available, and I see Director Fu and his team is available to provide a presentation for council. Um, a little background, so we do have an interim ordinance that's in effect right now, which will sunset by the end of the year. So based on council's direction tonight, staff will be going through the actual ordinance, taking it to Planning Commission, and then bring it back for council for the final approval. With that said, I'm going to turn over to Director Fu.
Thank you.
Thanks, Pamela. Welcome, um, welcome back. Yeah, thank you, Madam City Manager. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ben Fu, Director of Community Development. Appreciate the introduction with me tonight. We have two members of our planning team. Pewco is the planning manager. We also have Emmy, uh, who is, uh, new to our department and making, uh, making her, uh, her debut as City Council, uh, and providing the bulk of this discussion for, for tonight. So with that, I will hand it off to, uh, to Pew and Emmy.
Thank you, Ben. I think Emmy is pulling up that presentation right now. Okay, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. Emmy Sugiyama, planning staff, presenting the Senate Bill Nine study session. As a reminder to council and to provide additional context, uh, Senate Bill Nine went into effect at the beginning of two thousand twenty-two. In anticipation of the bill, your council adopted an interim ordinance at the December twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one meeting. That interim ordinance is set to expire on December nineteenth of this year. So to meet this deadline, staff is bringing a regular ordinance to Planning Commission for their recommendation on October eleventh. The ordinance is anticipated to be brought to your council in November, and this timeline would allow for the regular ordinance to go into effect by December fifteenth. Senate Bill Nine, otherwise referred to as S B nine, additionally allows for the ministerial review and approval of two lot subdivisions, referred to as urban lot splits, um, and two-unit development on single-family zone lots. State law requires certain criteria be met for projects proposing development of residences under S B nine, including that the lot proposed for development must be in a single-family zoning. Uh, the proposal cannot include the demolition of certain affordable rental housing. Additionally, development cannot be located in certain sensitive areas that are identified under Senate Bill thirty-five, and cannot be a historical landmark or located in historic district. Following development, no short-term rentals are permitted per state law. In addition to those criteria applied to residential development under S B nine, proposed lot splits under S B nine must result in lots which are at least one thousand two hundred square feet, cannot result in a lot that is less than forty percent of the original lot size, and are limited to residential uses. At least one resulting lot must be owner-occupied for at least three years following subdivision, and urban lot split provisions can only be used once for each lot, and the subdivision of adjacent lots by the same owners is not allowed. While the previous slides outline the restriction for proposed development, municipal regulations must allow for the development of two units of at least eight hundred square feet each with a maximum required setback of four feet. Cities may only require one garage parking space per unit. Additionally, cities cannot require urban lot splits to provide for off-site improvements or the correction of non-conforming zoning conditions. State law supersedes certain city regulations for subdivisions and development standards. However, under S B nine, cities may impose regulations for development so long as those standards are objective, requiring no discretion at their application, and do not prevent urban lot splits or two-eight-hundred-square-foot units. The city adopted objective standards through interim ordinance twenty-one dash two-two-three-five. These objective standards were adopted in an effort to protect and preserve existing neighborhood character, to maintain privacy protection standards for ministerially reviewed projects, to address and minimize potential traffic conflicts that may occur due to increased density, and to protect environmental resources. Using the objective standards outlined in the interim ordinance, planning staff has conducted preliminary reviews of proposals for both urban lot splits and duplex development under S B nine. While the adopted objective standards have generally been effective in meeting the aims outlined in the previous slide, staff has received comments on the regulations and is requesting council's input on standards for lot configuration, second-story decks, a limitation to change in grade, a zero-foot setback allowance, and the requirement for a second-story building envelope. Please note that while other clarifying edits will be proposed as part of the regular ordinance being brought to you in November, staff does not currently expect any other objective standards from the interim ordinance to be changed. We will first address standards for lot configuration for proposed urban lot splits. Current standards outline specified lot configurations that are based on the existing lot's shape. Under current standards, interior of high-shaped lots with a street frontage of less than sixty feet must result in a flag lot, while interior of high-shaped lots with a street frontage of sixty feet or more must result in two side-by-side lots. That's shown on the figure on the left. These standards were adopted to maintain consistency with general plan policies and with the pattern of lots within the city. Based on our G I S data, fewer than two percent of R-one-zoned lots in Cupertino are flag lots. And these standards were also adopted to mitigate potential privacy concerns that accompany flag lots. As an example, and to better illustrate this point, as shown on the left, a side-by-side lot split would result in, at most, views from two new units onto neighboring properties and in comparison developments of units on lots that are flag lots have the potential to produce views of up to four units on neighboring properties. This standard has been brought to your attention today following a comment received from the public. Commenters have noted that the standard limits development potential and that the city should allow flag lots in an effort to encourage development. Comments have also noted that the disallowance of flag lot does not reflect the pattern of lots in the city. However, as noted before, only one-point-seven percent of the city's R-one-zoned lots are flag lots. Additionally, comments noted that the requirement for a side-by-side lot split would result in lots that are too narrow to accommodate development. Staff believes that these concerns could potentially be addressed through the zero-foot setback allowance, which we will discuss later in more time. With that, staff is seeking council's direction on whether to retain the existing lot configuration standards or to modify the regulations to allow for lots of any street frontage to result in a flag lot. Our next request for direction relates to second-story decks. Current standards disallow second-story decks and balconies for S B nine development in both R-one and residential hillside zones. This restriction was included to address potential privacy concerns that are associated with smaller and narrower lots resulting from urban lot splits, as well as to address the ministerial nature of the permit issuance under S B nine. Following construction of residences through S B nine, property owners may apply for an addition of a second-story deck or balcony. In R-one zones, these requests for decks are reviewed and approved through a minor residential permit, which requires discretionary review. And in the residential hillside zones, deck additions would be approved through just a building permit. With decreased requirements for side and rear setbacks, S B nine development produces additional potential for privacy impacts, especially where second-story decks are concerned. Here is, here is an example of a lot being developed with two units under S B nine. Should a second-story deck be allowed, potential views onto the occurring, or to the neighboring yard may occur. We see this in existing development today. Take this house for example, with a second-story deck located along its side property line. A second view shows that the deck offers direct views into the backyard of a neighboring property. Here you can see another example of a recently constructed second-story deck with views into the neighbor's yard, one side, and onto the other. With that, staff is requesting council's direction on whether to retain existing second-story deck regulations, which would allow for subsequent development of decks and balconies following the construction of an S B nine unit, or to modify those regulations to disallow second-story decks and balconies for all future homes and lots created under S B nine. Next, we'll go over the grade change limitation that was implemented through our interim ordinance. Currently, the city disallows a change in grade of more than six inches for urban lot splits. This limitation is currently not applied to development for residences proposed under S B nine. What that means is when an existing lot is redeveloped and an urban lot split is proposed, the grading associated with that lot split is limited to six inches in change from natural grade. However, once residences are developed on those lots, those residences are not subject to this grade change limitation. We are bringing this to council's attention today because the height of a proposed development is measured from natural grade, so a drastic change in natural grade that is not accounted for could lead to increased height that is inconsistent with the surrounding area, as well as increased privacy impacts. Additionally, significant changes in grade may alter the existing natural contours, which may in turn affect drainage or create aesthetic impacts, and exorbitant cuts can lead to significant environmental impacts, such as landslides or additional erosion. When an urban lot split is proposed, areas for future driveways and building pads must be identified. Grading for these features will often lead to a change in natural grade. In this case, a cut has been made to accommodate a level building pad for a split-level residence. Once developed, the residences will utilize the leveled-out elevation to measure their height. As you can see in this example, since a split-level foundation was used, the height of the proposed development varies and follows the upward slope of the lot. While limiting the amount of grade change has benefits for aesthetic privacy and environmental reasons, in its in application of these standards, staff has found that the grade change limitation may be too restrictive. At this point, one property owner has noted that the standard has limited their ability to pursue an urban lot split. The reason being that on lots with even a moderate slope of about five percent, a minimum of a one-foot cut would be required to accommodate a standard twenty-foot-deep garage. As such, staff is proposing to modify the ordinance standards to make design and development of S B nine lots and residences more accessible. To inform our next steps and revisions, staff requests council's direction on whether to retain the existing grade change limitation or to move forward with the regulation, with modifying the regulations, um, and to apply the revised regulations to both urban lot splits and to development under S B nine. Our next request for direction focuses on the zero-foot setback allowance that was built into our interim ordinance on the proposal of Vice Mayor Chow. As shown to the right, S B nine allows developers to utilize a four-foot setback alongside and rear property lines to accommodate infill development. The city's standards would allow developments proposed on lots resulting from urban lot splits to have a zero-foot setback, allowing additional development potential on smaller lots. This allowance was included to incentivize and increase setback along property lines ordering non-S B nine developments. While the allowance would create additional development potential, as it currently is written, the standard has the potential to result in setbacks of varying size at any point along the shared property line. For example, and as shown to the right, under current standards, units could be developed anywhere between zero to four feet from the set, or from the property line, and are not required to consistently apply the setback to all units on the property. To address these inconsistencies, staff is proposing clarifying edits to the standard, which would allow for a zero-foot setback only if the opposing sideyard setback is a minimum of five feet on the first floor and ten feet on the second floor. The units along the zero-foot setback are developed at the same time, and the entirety of the wall faces with a zero-foot setback are structurally attached. With that, staff brings the standard before you today to request direction on whether to retain the existing zero-foot setback or to modify the regulation to either clarify the standard as outlined on the previous slide or to require a four-foot setback consistent with state law, therefore eliminating the allowance. Finally, staff requests council's direction on the city's second-story building envelope regulation. This regulation requires a two-story residence to comply with the building envelope for both the first and second story, as shown to the right. This regulation for the second-story building envelope was included to address massing and privacy concerns, which may be mitigated for a reduced interior second-story design. One member of the public has commented that the requirement limits more modern designs and limits overall development potential. Staff would like to note that more modern designs with stacked walls may be accommodated with an increased side setback. Additionally, the requirement does not restrict the total allowable floor area, but rather requires that the residence be designed to avoid substantial second-story massing. Staff is requesting council's direction on whether to retain the existing second-story building envelope or to modify the regulations to eliminate the requirement. To summarize, staff is requesting direction on the following. Staff's recommendations are underlined. Regarding flag lot configuration, is it council's direction to retain the existing standards or to modify the standards to allow for flag lots in all lots? Regarding second-story decks and balconies, is it council's direction to retain the existing regulations which allow for subsequent development of these features? Or to modify the regulations to disallow in perpetuity these features from future homes created under S B nine? Regarding the grade change limitation, is it council's direction to retain the existing grade change limitation of six inches or to modify the regulations and apply the revised limitations to both urban lot splits and S B nine development? And in regards to zero-foot setback allowance, is it council's direction to retain existing zero-foot setback allowance to modify the regulations to clarify the standard? Or to eliminate the allowance and apply the state-mandated four-foot setback? Finally, regarding the second-story building envelope requirement, is it council's direction to retain the existing second-story building envelope requirement or to eliminate the requirement? As a reminder, staff is preparing a regular ordinance, which will incorporate all your responses from today. Uh, following this meeting, staff will be hosting a community meeting next week on Wednesday, September twenty-eighth at six P M. This will be a hybrid meeting, and community members have been invited to attend either in person at Community Hall or online via Zoom. Staff will be taking the regular ordinance to Planning Commission for their recommendation on October eleventh, and the ordinance is expected to reach City Council for the first reading on November first. And that concludes our presentation.
Great, thanks very much. We will go to our members of the public now for public comment, and then we will go back to council after that for questions, uh, and then any comments, uh, and then following that, we'll entertain a motion, followed by potentially further discussion. Um, so, uh, given our time constraints, uh, just to uh, give you a signposting on it, at six-thirty, we will adjourn uh, this special meeting, and we might continue it to the regular meeting uh, for this particular item, uh, depending on how we're doing on time. So, uh, right now I have hands raised on Zoom. This is a teleconference-only special meeting, and so it's only the Zoom function where we have, um, the potential public speakers here. They are from Jennifer, Tej Kohli, and I have now a hand raised from Nidu Kohli. And so everyone will have three minutes. Please have your hand raised by the time that the first person is done speaking, and that's the hand raised in your Zoom function. And so Jennifer, welcome. You're our first speaker again, and you'll have the three minutes.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Hi, I'm Jennifer Griffin. Welcome to the new staff uh, and to everyone involved in this. These have been very, very trying times with the housing laws. They're very worrisome. They have caused a great deal of uproar in neighborhoods and the state. Um, I consider it an absolute insult that the state would allow these bills to be signed right after we worked our lives out to try to get through COVID. I, I consider this an absolute assault upon the public, and whoever is perpetrating these laws are selfish, naive, gullible, and easily led. Money is the objective, but I think that the bulk of the people that are working to get these bills passed are completely naive as to where the money is coming from. Uh, stated that, um, I understand there's a community meeting next Wednesday on the twenty-eighth. I know there's an A D U meeting, but I would like to make sure that I know about the meeting on the twenty-eighth because, believe me, the public are stakeholders in this. I sent a letter to the City Council and Planning Commission this afternoon, which is included in the public record for this. Um, I am absolutely appalled at these bills. I do not believe them to be legal. The public, who is very involved, have not been able to vote on any of these bills for four years. You don't run a democracy like that. Um, I've thought very carefully about this, and the Revolutionary War was fought over local control. And if anybody has a problem with that, they can go back and look at the history of this country. There were people that were sitting in colonies on the eastern part of this country that had known better than trying to survive, you know, milk their cows, do whatever, for whatever reason. And for some reason, they all came together and formed a country. Now, maybe the people who are pushing S B nine and S B ten need to go back and review their history and find out where their allegiances are. These bills are paramount to what happened at the taking of the Capitol on, on January sixth. Um, I, I do not believe these laws are valid. No second-story decks, zero lot line, please. What you're doing with that, member? The public, the neighbors? Okay, and I really, really, really resent the nannydom of you can't have, you can't, it's like, what do you call this stupid thing that they're coming up with, which is like, um, by right and ministerial? What an insult! What do you think we are, babies? I mean, this is the worst nanny state I have ever seen. And, okay, the neighbors, we're, if this happened to me, we have to go out and pay
fifteen seconds.
thousand dollars to have the lot lines, um, surveyed. And, and what about my tree? What about my street? What about my sewer line? My mother lives on a lot subdivided into nineteen-twenty-four thousand square feet with
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Tej Kohli, followed by Nidu Kohli, followed by Nagaraj Murthy. Welcome, Tej. And Tej will need to unmute your microphone.
I am trying. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Paul, and thank you to the city for that detailed presentation. It was quite enlightening, and I learned a lot. So, um, Mayor Paul, uh, I've been working, as you know, with the, the planning department, with Pew and Emmy specifically, over the last ten odd months, nine odd months, to try and understand how we can do this right. I'm gonna try and see if I can share. Am I allowed to share here? Really quick?
Actually, I'm not sure. I think you'll probably need to send your material over to
Why don't I do that? Why don't I do that? No worries. But I'll, I'll call your attention to two special things. I totally understand of, you know, what the city has been going through. I mean, S B nine was, came down like a hammer. Some of us want to take advantage of it by advantage. I mean, look, we've got a much larger lot in Pico-Teen. Right? There are density requirements that are coming up. We've got a fifteen thousand square foot lot. We live in a neighborhood that has forty-four such ones. And if we split it into two, that still gives us a seventy-five hundred square foot lot, which if I, if my understanding is right, is larger than fifty percent of the lots in Pico-Teen. All the privacy things can be taken care of. We can make sure that the two houses that we plan to build will be morden. Don't worry about the second floor, that coverage, but they'll be new, they'll be solar, they'll be environmentally friendly, and our street will be proud of it. The other important thing to understand about our streets is that each house here is a hundred feet wide and a hundred and fifty feet deep. That hundred-foot width makes for very nice broad homes with broad street frontage that everybody likes. The city is pushing us to cut the lots into fifty-foot wide and a hundred and fifty feet deep, a threes-to-one ratio, which is almost unbuildable on. It puts two railroad-style homes right next to each other with major privacy concerns of how one would overlap the other. A four-by-three ratio, which is hundred by seventy-five, which is what we're proposing with a flag lot, is much nicer. It's a golden ratio. Architects love it. You can build two beautiful homes that do not break the privacy concerns. Uh, if I draw your attention to the way the drawings were portrayed, um, nobody's putting two long lots on each of the front and the back lot to destroy them. Look, as a homeowner, I want to maximize what the next person that buys my house does with the house. Right? So I intend to actually build both the homes with the same architect to make sure that privacy concerns are not an issue. Again, these are seventy-five by hundred-foot lots, right, that are very built. Last thing I'll say is we start by saying we want to preserve neighborhood, uh, you know, character. You can't do that by putting two narrow fifty-foot, um, uh, houses here. Number two, privacy. Guarantee you, we'll use the best architects, and we'll have backyard privacy, and we're not asking for second-floor decks unless absolutely required. And if they do, they won't face each other. They'll probably face different. Right? Uh, minimizing traffic. Guess what?
Fifteen seconds.
Yeah. A flag lot means you can put ten cars on it without taking up any more parking spaces on the street. So there's lots of advantages from flag lots. Privacy, kids riding their bikes on that long driveway with all kinds of
Thank you, Tej. Our next speaker is Nidu Kohli. Welcome, Nidu.
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Great. Hi. Oh, thank you. Well, I'd like to give my time to Tej Kohli.
Oh, uh, consolidation of time only gives you one more minute, if you wanted to
That's fine.
All right, welcome back, Tej.
No worries. No, one more minute is great. So guys, just wanted to again appeal to the city that one rule does not fit all. Right? There are a hundred and eighty, as I'm told, uh, you know, flag lots here. People are super happy in flag lots, and that's an important concern for me. And the reason is, we might want to live in the flag lot for privacy and safety. Two, flag lots are, you know, people are paying two million dollars for a flag. Right? And there's obviously something good there. I have to maximize the livability of these two homes that we plan to build. So my appeal to you is, one rule does not fit all. These are larger special lots. The two lots we are creating are different. Last thing I'll say, if I were a buyer, a hypothetical buyer, that came into Cupertino and purchased a five-thousand-foot lot on Bug versus the seventy-five hundred lot that I'm cutting up. Right? Second-class citizen, so the lot is fifty percent larger, and all of a sudden, this lot does not allow a basement, or does not allow a deck, or does not allow other restrictions? How can you, how can you spare that certainty? Right? So it's important for us to understand that somebody buying a lot in Cupertino is buying a lot. Right? They're not buying an S B nine-cut lot. They're just buying a lot with their hard-earned money. And these arbitrary commerce clauses that we're putting up on as a city will be hard.
Well, thanks very much, and we'll go on to our next public speaker. Um, that's Nagaraj Murthy, and Nagaraj is our last, uh, hand-up on on the public Zoom function. And so Nagaraj, welcome. You'll have three minutes.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Ah, so, thank you, guys, and, uh, thank you, Mayor Paul. Appreciate the time. Um, I was going to, I live on the other street, if you will, to Tej. He lives on, uh, Columbus. I live on Vai, so very similar, um, artifacts of the lot. And in fact, I was going to use some of my time to him, but it looks like he got done before, uh, you know, he used up his time. I'm not going to take all three minutes. I'm just going to give you some of my thoughts. Um, my background is engineering, so this concept of less than two percent lots have flag lots, and therefore we're not going to allow it, doesn't compute. Right? That makes, you, you can't make such a statistical discussion. Your other allows something, or you don't. Right? The second part of it also is, I have a different view. Cupertino is a nice, very nice place. It's a, it's an upscale, SS Artaga Los Altos. California has a problem with housing people. It's all California has a problem with housing people. Let's all admit that. Okay, so it's not about, you know, I bought my lot and it's got fifteen thousand square foot, so I'm gonna live on it. Uh, so so let's make it a little bit easier, be good citizens of California to try to allow more people. To 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 find places to live, right? I mean, my thought is a little bit different than Tej's. I would like to be able to construct something in my back. And allow people to go get there and stay in a wonderful school district. At, you know, something that just pays my bills for for the back house to be rented. This is going to make one family very, very happy. That's my goal. I don't intend to make money off of this. I'm extremely happy with where I am. Our intent is to make California a fun place and and a livable place, right? That's all I ask. And so again, let's go create something that are logical. Let's not use less than two percent statistics, so therefore we're not going to allow you to do that. That has to be law. You can't do statistics with law. You either do it or you don't, right? And and I'm not going to dwell on the things that Tej talked about, right? An SB nine partition lot is a lot. You cannot treat it differently. Than a normal lot that if I were to come to you on a regular lot and ask for permission. So again, uh, Mayor Paul and council members and planning staff, I do appreciate your time hearing me out. I do hope that I gave you some of my uh my my perspective. And I certainly look forward to the community meeting next uh next week. And you guys have a wonderful day, a wonderful evening today.
Great, thanks very much, Nagaraj. And as uh stated previously, that is the last public comment on this special. Uh, special meeting study session item. And so let's bring it back to council for any questions of staff. Uh, with regard to the presentation or perhaps follow-ons from the public comment. And I'll go by a show of hands from the zoom function. And uh, that's how I'll be calling on on people throughout the evening. Um, and so uh, just to uh, give you ample notice on that, I don't see any hands uh raised. And so. If we don't have questions, um, I will go and ask for. Motion based on the staff recommendation, but I do see Councilmember Willie now has a hand raised. And so let's go to Councilmember Willie. And Councilmember Willie, uh, as you're uh searching for the mute function, um, let me go ahead and uh. Let people know, let's let's start with about. Uh, let's go with three minutes each and see if maybe we can uh achieve a motion uh after that round. So, uh, John, go ahead. Welcome.
Yeah, thank you. And so, uh, did you say five minutes we're starting with?
I I said three, uh, maybe, maybe it's a bit optimistic, uh, but three gets us to about six twenty. And uh, yeah, we end at six thirty.
So I think, uh, Emmy, if you could go back to the bit building envelope, I did have a question there to start with. My question's pretty much uh focus on privacy, you know, I mean, we have. A lot of residents that paid, you know, really struggled to get their house and. Under the existing uh expectations of privacy. So when I look at this uh second story uh dotted line, uh, I'm a little bit confused on that. You know, the second story, as I understand it, it needs to be in the existing pre uh SB nine. Uh, an additional five foot setback for that second story. Are we saying that SB nine removes that uh additional setback for the second story?
So for this one, we have a requirement that requires a second story setback and then it would be absolved um for the zero foot lot line. But other than that, we have just the building envelope. That would be kind of the restrictor there.
Um, if I may also jump in, sir, uh, through the mayor. Um, so SB nine essentially states that. Uh, for both the first and the second floor, the maximum setback that the city can require is four feet. There is no additional five foot setback that that is required under discretionary two-story permits.
Yeah, uh, little bit scary there that uh that much oversight on the neighbors. Uh, house as opposed to, like I say, the existing Cupertino, well, and correct me if I'm wrong with you. The existing requirement is when a house has a second story, it has to have an additional setback. That much further from the uh fence line, you know, an additional five feet. And now the neighbors are not going to have that. Um, you know, previous privacy uh requirement. And that's, I think, what you're saying.
That is correct. Uh, so in the second story, under normal circumstances, one is required to have a total setback of twenty-five feet. So a ten and a fifteen would satisfy that requirement at a minimum um on the sides. Um, but with SB nine, the requirement is a total of eight feet with no side less than four feet.
Yeah. So then, uh, again, sticking with privacy and, you know, I hear that, you know, from the resident. That happens to have, you know, a hundred uh hundred foot wide uh lot, you know. Again, coming at it from a privacy uh point of view. Uh, and I'm I'm open. I'm I'm not, uh, you know, creating, you know, I don't have decisions already made. I'm trying to determine. How best to um uh work this through for all the Cupertino residents. That said, you know, I live down in Rancho and most of the lots are all fifty feet wide. Fifty feet wide and with the existing five foot setbacks on both sides. It winds up being a forty foot wide house, twenty foot wide garage that's required. And then twenty feet for the entryway and living.
Giving you thirty seconds of my time.
Okay, and um, you know, when we start looking at the size of the house uh and how big it is. For those those houses, you know, well over two thousand square feet fit on fifty foot wide lots. The flag lots that put the house back further, again aggravating the privacy of those rear. Houses is concerning. And so I I really need to look at that more.
Okay, thank you. Let's go on to council member. I think council member more you had hand raised. Did you want to speak this time or okay, Vice Mayor Chow?
Councilmember Wei.
I'm sorry. You're you're next, Councilmember Chow.
Oh, okay. So I, sorry, I missed the the staff recommendation for the fifth item. The staff report did not really specify what's the staff recommendation. The second story building envelope. The staff recommendation is which one?
Retain the current standards.
To retain, okay. Okay. Um, so for flat lot, initially, I also agree with the. Staff recommendation that, oh, this is more complicated. Maybe it's not suitable for SB nine streamlining. Keep in mind, this SB line now is different from a regular last split because. There is no appeal process. Uh, this is, it'll be streamlined, so I was leaning towards. Uh, the. I regulations that does not create complication because we we don't have the benefit of. More public oversight or appeal to resolve them. However, thinking about flat dot. Um, if we split a hundred foot house into two health. The street looks a lot more crowded aesthetically. Uh, compared with having flat lot, a house in the back, a house in the front. The the look of the street actually looks. More like regular single half family neighborhood because the driveway to the back is less visible. So I think aesthetically, I don't think, I don't, I don't. I don't understand why we would not allow it, but I looked up that. Flat dock do have some other complications, for example, emergency vehicle access. And also when people have flat dock, they might have shared easement. And then some shared repairment is utility easement. Those might create complications, so. If those were adequately addressed or. I don't see a reason to not allow flat lot. In a neighborhood since it really from from the outside, the neighborhood looks more. Has more integrity actually, having one in the front and in the back versus having two parallel. Smaller, narrower lots. So I'm wondering about that, what other people think.
That's uh, that's actually three minutes, Vice Mayor.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, uh, a- anyone else at this time? Councilmembers more or Wei, councilmember more?
Sure, um, I I wanted to to actually know a little bit about our our zoning. And with regards to the flag lot issue and um what. What zoning, I think that the the Columbus area, um, Columbus Ave area, you would need a ten thousand. Square foot lot because it's R one dash ten, so ten thousand square foot minimum if they were going to try to go. Through the regular process. So I'd I'd like to understand that and then um. Uh, just have a quick tutorial on the other uh, the other zoning uh requirements. So if you had it. Um, an R one dash six, what's the minimum lot size there? And also, am I able to tell if I'm looking at R one dash ten, um, like guess what the what the lot size? Would be, or or do you have a variety of of different lot sizes with that um zoning designation? Thank you. And I and and it might help if if we pulled up the zoning map to see, get a look around the city, because I think, I think. In terms of the homes on in on Columbus, and I did go out and walk that area. Um, I I don't know if. I I I don't know if applying a a zoning change would be a better solution. And then I, in order to try to accommodate them versus looking at the flag lot issue. Um, through SB nine and just saying, well, let's allow, let's allow the flag lots. I don't know what the unintended consequences of doing that are. Same with zoning. If we're gonna go, hey, R one ten, you can now, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna get rid of the ten thousand square foot requirement. And we'll make it seventy-five hundred, something like that. So I was, I I I don't really know what what approaches we can do. And and if we either approach what the, as I said, the unintended consequences might be. So some guidance around that would help.
I I can try to answer that a little bit. Um, so in order for um. The normal process to be followed for this particular area, uh, Mr. Kohli, for example, uh, his property would at a minimum have to be. Um, a little bit close to seventeen thousand five hundred square feet in order for him to be able to. Um, get two units on it under the general plan density. So in order for that whole area to be subdividable, divisible, under normal rules. They, we would have to increase the density in that entire neighborhood in order to accommodate the two lots. An unintended consequence of doing that would be that um now Mr. Kohli could pursue a normal subdivision under. Um, uh, under the regular rules and then subsequently subdivide under SB nine. So you could end up with four lots where you currently have one. Um, and uh, so so that's one consequence of it. Um, with regard to um other areas, again, we'd have to look to see whether the general plan density would allow additional units. Under normal circumstances. Um, and then uh obviously SB nine allows subdivision regardless of what the general plan density is.
Okay, great. Uh, that's uh time. So let's go to council member.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. So I'd like to um draw, uh, put out two more items that staff did not make any recommendations. On the page forty-nine and fifty on the A, B and C. The one A B says limit one unit to eight hundred and larger unit, no more than two hundred square feet greater than that. I think it's a little too restrictive. For example, if you have a family who like to build a studio to accommodate a. A mother-in-law and then have three bedroom for two kids, then this would disallow that. This would sort of more evenly. I understand the reasons that you want a balanced um. Mix of duplex when you're building duplexes, but I do believe a little bit more flexibility to fit the needs of our residents. Might be good. That's my first recommendation to relook at this restriction. That one unit is under eight hundred, the other one cannot be more than two hundred square feet is bigger than that. That really is pretty restrictive. And I I think these are for our residents who have different needs. So the second one is, I'm curious of the um number C, that. The limits, any ministry approved units to not exceed two thousand square feet. I have, I have a question. Why two thousand? What is, what is this magic number? Is why twenty, not twenty-one hundred, twenty-two hundred? Or why not just not limited? Because we do have the loss size ratio to forty-five percent. So according to our lots, I think uh naturally we can, uh, the units would be limited to the size because of our forty. Um, our lot to ratio size. So I have two questions on these three. I think I will love the staff or us to relook at it. And see what we can do about it. Make it more flexible and not limit to two thousand. Just let it be. We have uh standards to to uh limit. What, how many square feet that it can be. The second one I like to put on the tension is the uh. Which one's the second one? Hold a minute. Um, I'm gonna hold on to the second one next one. Okay, I'm good with now.
Yeah, I can attempt to answer those questions, uh, council member Wei. So so just to be clear, um, the eight hundred square foot. Um, limit is not a a maximum. Um, that's, 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 that is, that is a a backstop. If an applicant is unable to comply with the development standards. So so um, an applicant that complies with the development standards. Can get up to forty-five percent of the FAR on uh the the parcel for a development of one or two units. Under SB nine. So so that 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 that's that eight hundred square foot minimum intended is a backstop to ensure that that is always allowed. Um, on the parcel as we're required to do by state law. So um, so so the units can be larger if the parcel is large enough to accommodate them. Um, so regarding the the two thousand square foot maximum, I mean, that that was a a a policy decision adopted by. Counsel, um, just I I I, you know, as I understand it, a policy preference to avoid having these projects have very large units. In practice, um, it affects very few uh parcels in the city that would be subdivided and developed under this statute. Just based on 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 parcel size. So um, it 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 has a pretty limited impact in practice.
Thanks, Chris. So my um, my for my council, fellow council members consider is things the only limited, I read the staff report answer. It's about a hundred uh u- units in our um house lots in our city because it needs big, really big lots for this to kick in. I I I personally think this restriction is sort of redundant because if you have big lots. I do think we should allow a little bit, you know, to conform our flow to uh area ratio forty-five percent. So I would think we need to reconsider this restrictive um two thousand square feet lot. I remember my second question. My second question is about balconies. Um, somewhere it says. Uh, the balconies do you do enclosed or um I couldn't find exactly what it is, but I'm thinking that. If something with these hundred lots that have really big lots, if they have balconies that are overlooking their own. Properties and they're not looking over anything, I do think it's a little bit more restrictive to say every balcony has to be enclosed. Uh, to a certain degree. So I would like our council to take a look at these two spots in our ordinance.
Okay, um, I pushed over a minute. And so, well, you know, in the interest of trying to find out if we can get some agreement. Why don't we uh go point by point for the items that staff was asking for some um. Guidance on. Uh, can we start with flag lots to see if there is an interest? Um, you know, among council to allow uh these items. And so perhaps I'll just start with um. Councilmember Willie and then Councilmember Moore, I'll just Councilmember Wei, Vice Mayor. Show, should we go just kind of as a straw poll? Councilmember Willie, would you care to weigh in on that for the first item flag lots?
Um, my, my main point is uh privacy protection. And, you know, I'm, yeah, that. Privacy protection, I need to think about that more. So I'm gonna leave it at that for right now. Yeah, that privacy protection, I need to think about that more, so I'm gonna leave it at that for right now.
Okay, council member Moore.
Oh, it, there's, there are, there are too many unanswered questions at this point for me to feel comfortable making a suggestion either way. It's the unintended consequences issue. Um, and the the ending up with four lots, so some of this is, it's new to me. Uh, so I would like to, it's new information, so I'd like to know how many um, lots would be potentially impacted. And if there's a way to to provide a a a way for some of these lots to be, become a flag lot. Either through an SB nine modification or through some sort of zoning changes. Um, and then it, my concern is that if we go that route, that we are gonna be impacting a much larger area. And we don't really have, in my opinion, the outreach on that. Um, to know what people think about it at this, at this time. So um, I'm concerned about changing it because of unintended consequences and a lack of information.
Okay, uh, council member White.
Okay, um, I've said in the last study session, I do believe building flexibility in any ordinances is good. Because all these building standards, they're good to have, have standards, but sometimes it's not one size fits all. And I am very familiar with the Columbus Vay Avenue area. Um, I actually have a friend who built years ago, built a flag lot uh, property in that area and looks really good. So I, we have owners come say they're willing to build a flag lot because it makes more sense. They don't have to be so narrow, it's architectural more convenient. I am for flexibility. I think having flexibility in ordinances is good. It fits into a lot of different scenarios, it fits into different owners' needs. Keep in mind, these uh, SB nine, even though it's not anybody's favorite, it's not my favorite either. It is meant for homeowners to build something that fits their needs. Cupertino is a very uh, a place that is very family oriented. It really is something that people want to build something for their families to live together or close by. So I do think flexibility is important in our city. We are a city of um, people who really like to um, live together a little bit. And so to me, personally, privacy is not that big of issue when I, if I build a duplex, if I do. That I have my mother-in-law or my kids living with me, privacy is not that, but it's good. We should have privacy things, but I do think flexibility is good. I am okay, yeah, with allowing it.
Understood. Okay, so let's go to Vice Mayor Chow and we're on flag lots.
So I agree with uh, council member Moore that I would like to see the, to find a way to allow it. For unlimited cases. And I think flexibility is important for when in the, in the discretionary process. Where which has public hearing and appeal, but then in through SB nine. Administrative process without that process, describe public hearing. I'm concerned flexibility means we are taking away. Other people's rights. Um, and when they have no venue to appeal and they might not even know when everything is done. So, but then I do want to find um, some way we can. Where it makes sense to allow fast speed either through SB nine or possible rezoning. But I really appreciate staff's recommendation that staff has concern about this. And I appreciate staffs pointing out that if they do seven point five, R seven point five. Lot split discretionary, they can still apply SB nine after that. That's a possible concern, um, so we we need to think about if we allow. A discretionary lot split, can we then say SB nine cannot be applied? Probably not, not sure. So, yeah, I want to find a solution that work for where it makes sense. But I don't think it should be universally applied. So.
Okay, um, so I guess uh, that leaves me, you know. I I I think the the particular example that we're seeing from resident concerns. And public comment, I would be okay with uh, making a flag lot. But with regard to the other concerns raised by um, colleagues on council, I I can see where. The possibility of unintended consequences come in. Um, is there a more comprehensive look at the various uh, types of lots that we have in the city? And if not, uh, as you know, applied with regard to what's being proposed or, you know, possibly modified. How long would that take to get back in terms of, you know, some more specificity uh, throughout the city and and these various impacts?
So when we looked, when we did the original, um, when we came up with the original regulations, sir. I did go through uh, the city to kind of look at different neighborhoods, different lot type sizes and things like that. And coming up with the regulations that were proposed with the interim regulations. Uh, with regard to this particular site that is under discussion, I do want to say that it backs up directly onto sites that are fifty feet wide behind it as well. So I I just wanted to make that, I I I'm not trying to argue that, I'm just saying that there are lots around it. That it is surrounded by uh, lots that are less wide than what that particular lot is. Um, with that said, you know, is sixty foot the the nice breakpoint? Maybe council wishes to consider a different breakpoint on it, um, you know, is it a hundred feet, um, you know, again. Um, we as staff uh, believe that um, it's not the right way to develop based on our general plan principles and such. Um, and then the other uh, you know, um. The other requirements that we would have for driveways and, you know, excessive paving and things like that. And the privacy concerns from uh, having flag lots. But with that said, you know, we're, we're open to whatever council direction is on this.
I see, okay. Well, thank you, Pew. Well, let me take a comment from our city manager before we, before we continue this uh, to the regular session. So Pamela, did you have?
Sure, thank you, Mayor Paul. Um, I just want to remind council, the reason we don't have the um, specific criteria in terms of what are we want to allow. Uh, a flag lot is we're merely asking for direction. So I understand that without um, flooded information, council may feel a little unease to make that direction call. However, I think what I heard is there's a possibility of allowing a flag lot as long as these criteria. Privacy, um, and certain lot size or whatnot characteristic and whatnot has been accounted for. So if that's the direction that council wants to go, we can come back when the ordinance is prepared. And hoping that we have captured these concerns around the council and we've built it, built that into the ordinance. So again, I I want to make sure that council understand what we're looking for is a direction setting fr- from tonight. Um, are you comfortable with flag lot? If so, these are the area you want staff to look into. If you're not comfortable with flag lot and will retain the ordinance the way it is.
Okay, uh, thank you, city manager. And so um, I can allocate thirty seconds each for council member Willie and council member Moore. Or we just, you know, continue, uh, what's your pleasure, council member Willie?
Yeah, the thirty seconds.
Okay, I'll I'll cut you off after thirty, that's.
Yeah, I I previously had meant to bring this up and I didn't. I'd sure like to know what the planning commission um, findings were, recommendations maybe. I would feel much more comfortable if I knew what their position was on each of these uh, points. Thank you.
Okay, let's go to customer more.
I I I actually really like council member Willie's um, suggestion there. Uh, I I would like to know, um, well, I'd actually like to hear the planning commission discuss. If there was a preferred route, either um, some, something in in zoning or through S SB nine. Which one um, would result in in a better outcome?
Okay, thanks very much, council member Moore. Let's go to councilman Wade to wrap up.
Uh, sorry, just with, just real short, I still believe in flexibility is good. So I like city manager Pamela's suggestion that if we um, said we would allow it. And the staff would make research and come back with recommendations that address the concerns that we are discussing right now.
Okay, thank you, customer way, customer member Chow, vice mayor Chow. You are un, you need to unmute.
I'm meant to comment for the next question, so.
Okay, well, let's uh, let's go ahead and continue this. Um, i- is there a particular suggested time that we continue this to? I am uh, thinking after the uh, oral communications, if that's something that uh, is workable for everyone. Um, let me see if I can, is that?
Mayor Paul, I think we put it before or uh, oral communications.
Oh, you put it before all communications.
After the ceremonial matters.
Okay, let me see, uh, ceremonial matters, consider proclamation. Oh, special, okay, yeah, no, that's I said after, after all.
After oral communication, right.
Yeah, like I said, okay, so, okay, let's go ahead and uh, adjourn this meeting. And we'll see you uh, back um, in community hall for some of us. And um, thank you very much, we'll see you in about fifteen minutes. We'll start the meeting at six forty five.
Tonight's meeting is a hybrid meeting and so we have a couple of our members of council zooming in. And we have a few of us live on the dais. Madam City Clerk, would you please conduct a roll call?
Council member Moore.
Here.
Council member Way.
Here.
Council member Willie.
Here.
Vice Mayor Chow.
Uh, here.
Mayor Paul.
And I'm here, thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. All right, so our next item on the agenda falls under ceremonial matters and presentations, that's item one. That's consideration of a proclamation recognizing September twenty first as World Alzheimer's Day. And so that's tomorrow. Um, Madam City Clerk, um, I believe that we have a member of our staff, Alex Greer, is that correct? To accept the proclamation on behalf of our senior center staff, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, that is correct.
Okay, great. So I see Alex with a camera on. Alex, welcome. Did you uh, want to say a few words um, in accepting this proclamation on essentially everyone's behalf?
Yes, thank you, honorable mayor and city council members. Um, uh, it is my pleasure to uh, accept this proclamation um, and recognition. In behalf of the city of Cupertino's senior center staff. And we appreciate the awareness uh, that this creates for for this disease. Thank you for having me.
Absolutely, thank you very much, Alex. And so I'm gonna go ahead and uh, offer council member Way a bit of my camera. If you'd like to come on over, councilway, I know that you're uh, trying to get on to Zoom here. So why don't you join us here for a, a quick shot for the um, proclamation? So, everyone, and uh, councilman Willie, all right, great. All right, uh, proclamation accepted, uh, barring any objections, because this, of course, is consideration of the proclamation. And uh, we typically don't take votes on the ceremonial items, so uh, thank you very much for accepting, Alex. Uh, keep doing a great job over at the senior center and we will certainly uh, keep up with the programs and services. Uh, that outreach to our elderly population and help uh, interweave the various parts of our community together as well. So um, we are on to item number two, that is another proclamation. That's considering a proclamation recognizing National Hispanic Heritage Month uh, from September fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two. Uh, a few days ago until October fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. And Madam City Clerk, I understand that you will be the representative of our city uh, accepting this proclamation on behalf of everyone.
Yes, Mayor, um, thank you, Mayor and council members. Thank you for joining the Hispanic and Latino community in observing National Hispanic Heritage Month. From September fifteenth to October fifteenth, celebrating diversity and cultural and economic contributions. Of Hispanic and Latinx Americans and honoring five of our Central American neighbors. Who celebrate their independence days in September. This year's theme is Unidos, is inclusivity for a stronger nation. Uh, the observation started in nineteen sixty-eight as Hispanic Heritage Week under President Lyndon Johnson. And it was expanded under President Ronald Reagan in nineteen eighty-eight to cover a thirty day period. Hispanic culture is known for a close ties with families as well as rich culinary, musical, religious. And holiday traditions that are passed down among families. Uh, on a quick personal note, my family immigrated from Mexico to the United States during the Mexican Revolution. Uh, fun fact, there is a book actually called Rain of Gold that tells that story. Um, I wanted to just share a quick picture. Um, this is my. My family that moved to the Monovista area in nineteen twenty-seven. This is my nona Sofia right here and my grandmother, Victoria, is a little baby sitting on the lap here. Um, so that is why I am proudly a native to Cupertino. Um, for many years now. Um, so, thank you, I'm happy to receive this proclamation, uh, celebrating Hispanic heritage.
Thank you very much, Kirsten, greatly appreciated. And thank you for that uh, walk down history lane, that was very fascinating and uh, great, um, great to, great to hear. And I'm glad to be able to honor, um, you know, on behalf of our city council, uh, the heritage of so many people, you know, throughout our community. And we see all of these various, um, you know, honorings and proclamations over the year, uh, years. But uh, in in my time on council, I hadn't seen this particular one, um, you know, observed. So happy to be able to provide it and thank you for for accepting it.
Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Okay, so let's go ahead and uh, take a quick shot of this as well. And so um, I'll uh, offer the dais space again to council member Way if uh, you haven't quite logged on yet. So let's take a quick, uh, sure, no worries, no worries at all. All right, well, thank you very much again, everyone. Um, item number three, and I know that I I did make a commitment to everyone to. Uh, try to keep these ceremonial matters and presentations down to two items each time. Um, I hope Madam City Manager, we were sufficiently efficient uh, for you on the first two items. Um, but our third item is actually related to one of our work program items. Um, and so uh, we're making an attempt to really integrate those work program items. Because um, advisedly, they are abundant, um, they span a wide breadth. And I think have a tremendous amount of benefit to the community. And so right now, we're gonna be providing a presentation on the homeless jobs program, which I believe was council member Willie's idea a couple of years ago. And um, after a couple of iterations now, uh, we do have uh, an update, I think in a really uh, good and timely manner. So Madam City Manager, would you like to introduce the uh, presentation for this item number three?
Sure, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, like you said, this is really one of those feeling good, success story that we want to bring back to council. Um, Keri Husler, the housing manager, will be providing a brief presentation and really to celebrate the victories that we've had. Um, it might have been small in some people's eyes, but it's better than nothing. So I would, great pleasure, I'll introduce, I know Director Fu is also with us, but I'll introduce this to Keri, uh, to Keri to uh, walk you through the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. And welcome, Keri.
Good evening, is my, is my microphone working?
It is, we can hear you now.
Okay, and how about the presentation? Is that?
That is up, yes.
Okay, I will start, thank you, thank you all. So good evening, Mayor Paul and council members. I am here this evening with the fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two and fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three city work program report on, on the homeless jobs program. On July fourteenth of this year, the Housing Commission received a presentation on last year's city work program report on homeless jobs program. This presentation to city council this evening includes an update on the progress from the new current fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three program. Joining us this evening is Josh Sillow, the executive director of West Valley, to answer any questions you may have.
Wonderful, thank you, Keri, and welcome, Josh. And so.
I'm moving to the next.
Very good, thank you.
There we go, okay. So this presentation is focused on the city's pilot homeless jobs program. The homeless jobs program is part of the city's work program for last year and this year. With an annual budget of two hundred thousand dollars, the objective is to provide employment for two unhoused residents for up to six months per year. So we're talking about two different years, so four residents total. In fall of twenty twenty, the city issued an RFP for the program administrator of the city's pilot homeless jobs program. West Valley Community Services submitted a proposal and the city selected West Valley, a local agency offering existing services to unhoused residents in Cupertino. West Valley coordinates with several regional employment services. To meet the city's needs, West Valley expanded their Haven to Home program to create the pilot homeless jobs program. And provide local employment services in Cupertino. I wanted to go over the specific budget numbers, so the city has allocated two hundred thousand dollars for each program year. The city entered into contract with West Valley for the amounts shown. Please note that the actual budget from last year was ninety-seven thousand dollars, much less than the contract amount. As a result of a client resigning from the program early due to personal challenges. So now I would like to give more information on the program elements and the budget run by West Valley Community Services. For each year, West Valley screened and selected two unhoused residents from Cupertino for jobs at West Valley and Cupertino. So we have residents that um are tied to our community. In fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two, this last year, the two full-time posi- and a facility assistant. This current year, the two full-time positions are allocated to the unhoused individuals as a market associate and facilities associate. So we've already seen significant progress in this year and that we've, that West Valley has already selected and begun the job training and employment track for two individuals. Moving to the next slide, pardon me. So while the slide is loading, there we go. West Valley created the pilot Homeless Jobs Program to provide two unhoused individuals with an opportunity to receive training and on-the-job experience to help support future employment, stability, and self-sufficiency. The program consists of the following elements. Two full-time positions with West Valley Community Services, work clothing, motel payment and housing search, training and job coaching, case management, financial coaching, and access to West Valley's menu of services. Now I'd like to talk about the specifics in this past year and this current year. For purposes of confidentiality, the program participants will be referred to just by client and by number. So for this past year, client, we have client number one and client number two. Both are Cupertino residents. Client number one served as a food programs assistant at West Valley and successfully completed the program. Client number one secured temporary employment and is working with West Valley to actively seek permanent employment. Client number one was stabilized in housing and has moved into a rapid rehousing unit in Santa Clara County, which is otherwise known as pathway, the pathways to housing. Client number two was employed as a facility assistant at West Valley and resigned from the program early in March due to personal challenges. And as I mentioned, we're happy to report that um two residents have already been selected and the process has begun for this current year. So purpose, for purposes of confidentiality, I'll refer to the program participants this year as client number three and client number four. Client number three and four moved into housing on August thirty-first and began, let me, let me be more specific. Moved into motel housing as part of the program on August thirty-first of this year and began employment on September first, so just a short three weeks ago. Client number three will serve as a market associate and client number four will serve as a facilities associate both at West Valley. The program will begin with orientation, onboarding activities, and supportive services as needed. City staff will continue to provide regular technical assistance and monitoring. And I'm, I'm here before you to just promise a commitment to continue to work closely with West Valley and to continue to support this program. And that concludes the presentation, and we do have Josh to help answer any questions we might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Kiri. Uh, much appreciated. And um although a bit uh different for ceremonial matters and presentations, uh given that this does tie to a work program item, I'm gonna go ahead and uh open those up to members of the public if they'd like to make some comments. Um, however, given the time constraints, I'm gonna go ahead and limit these comments to one minute each. And so if the video um team can set that clock at one minute for these, I'd appreciate it. And so uh we have Rahul Vadodkar, uh Jennifer and Judy Lomas with hands raised. And so again, this is not oral communications. This is item number three. And so if your hand is raised by the time the first person is done speaking, um, we'll call on you for this item number three. Uh, welcome, Jennifer. You are the first speaker. And Jennifer, if you wanted to, oh, you know what? I'm not sure if I have been made a co-host on this one because I transferred over from City Hall. So um if anyone that is a host can actually unmute uh Jennifer or either uh enable me as the co-host. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Yep.
Am I, I, you all can hear me now?
You're audible. Yes, welcome.
Yeah, so if we, the peculiarities of Zoom. Anyway, this program, I'm so happy that Cupertino has been able to do this. You know, two people's lives have been improved by this. Maybe the goal was for people. I think that even the person that was not able to continue last year, this would have been very helpful for them. A lot of people um have continual challenges. And the fact that the city is able to help these, these folks get more stability in their lives, be trained or retrained. It's very difficult to keep up with training, especially when you're an adult. And it's, it's wonderful that the city's been able to do this, and I hope we're able to continue this uh ongoing. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Jennifer. And so our next and uh final speaker on Zoom is Rahul Vadodkar. Before we go to Rahul, um, Madam City Clerk, were there any uh oral communications cards for uh this particular item or anyone who emailed you uh during this time?
No, Mayor, there were none.
Okay, uh, great. Uh, Rahul, welcome. You'll be the next and final speaker on this item number three. And if you wanted to speak on item number three.
Uh, yeah. Uh, am I audible?
Yes, we're audible. You're audible.
Okay, so I, I have a presentation in the oral section also, but I just wanted to say thank you so much for the West Valley Community Services. They are doing a wonderful job, and I didn't, I was not aware of this program, so thanks for introducing this. Um, that's all. I mean, very short comment this time. I have three-minute presentation later, but right now I just wanted to say thank you with both my hands.
Okay, wonderful.
And uh, yeah, thank you so much.
You're, you're absolutely welcome. And I'm sure um our colleague at West Valley Community Services uh expresses the same sentiment as well. Very appreciative. So let's go back to our um our council. And so uh Councilmember Willie, and I think it's quite appropriate that you have your hand raised first since this was your initial idea. Councilmember Willie, any questions or comments?
Uh, one of each. Sorry about that. Yeah, one of each. I'll start with the, you know, Josh of West Valley Community Services. How, how can I express, you know, the thanks and appreciation that you're, you know, enabling, you know, in helping people to become self-sufficient and develop their self-confidence, their self-respect, that they, they really are a valuable person? And so your, your organization coming and helping us with this is just fantastic. And uh the other comment is essentially along the same lines. And it's just, you know, for a person to feel good about themselves, you know, have self-confidence, have self-respect, you know, being able to provide at least some of their, their daily needs. To me, it's just, i- i- it's the essence of what everybody needs. And for us to be able to, to help in this way, it'd be great if it was bigger. And I hope that it will be bigger, and it'll catch on in other communities and uh ultimately um bring more people to, to this point in their life. And so I'll leave it at that, but I hope Josh will raise his hand and uh, you know, maybe make a comment or two. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. And um I'll go on, well, why don't we do this? Why don't we take comments uh from our uh council? And I think Councilmember Willie, you set a great example in terms of the timing, so let's go to Councilmember Moore, followed by Vice Mayor Chow and uh Councilmember Way, if you wish, and then myself. And then we'll have Josh just make some omnibus responses there. Great. Uh, let's go to Councilmember Moore.
Hey, um, thank you, and I definitely appreciate that we're providing this path to self-sufficiency. I was uh just put on the uh, the subcommittee for the um unhoused task force. And sadly, that first meeting was canceled due to a lack of quorum. So that's, that is really disappointing news because I'm hoping the county can provide more for us with regards to homelessness. Um, and, and we've seen it, this, this problem growing. And, yeah, we, we get a lot of emails and we're, we're trying to help, so I really appreciate what West Valley's um able to do and that we have these successes. I did have one question about the, the personal challenges of the individual who, who dropped out. And I think I, I, I'd heard kind of a, a more um, a brighter story about this individual and that they actually moved on to do uh some, get some education somewhere and that there, it might be a different. Um, that it, it's not, it's, it's not as sad as it sounds. And I don't know if that, if you have some more information about that, but I would, I'd like to hear it. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Moore. And we'll go on to Vice Mayor Chow at this time. Vice Mayor Chow.
Hello, hi. Uh, could you remind me again what's the budget? Any budget we have for this program?
It's not, we're not, we're not a back-and-forth, Vice Mayor Chow, but just to remind you from the presentation, it was two hundred thousand dollars per year.
And I do wonder if we could have economy of scale if we add more capacity because there is greater demands and then whether we could leverage the county's jobs program too. Um, that would be great, but it may not be in the scope of today's item.
Okay, uh, great. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. And I know that Josh has taken notes and will, yeah, just speak to those. Uh, Councilmember Way.
I'll be real short. Okay, um, so we usually say we help one child at a time. So in this program, we hi, we help one homeless person at a time. And I can see the sustainability in it. You know, it's not just give them money, but it's job training, um, self-respect, and eventually move on to independence. So um I really like what we're doing right now. Hopefully, we can expand it to a group program.
Wonderful. And um I, you know, I, I think we should just all take our uh deep breath collectively and, and give ourselves a mulligan because there's just been so much that's happened. And uh, you know, we, we, we not only have to work with multiple microphones, but you know, we're trying to socially distance and, you know. So, so just, you know, let's take a, a quick breather, pat ourselves on the back for everything we've gone through the last couple and a half years. Um, I, I, my quick question, um, I heard that one of the participants in this year is housed in a motel. And I'm not aware of motels in Cupertino, so my question um has to do with transit and transportation. And I asked that question uh as a VTA board member, but also as someone who has uh taken a, I, I think, a very evaluative position with regard to, you know, the various infrastructure that we can put in place. Speaking of taking a breather, we're kind of taking, I think, probably a bit of a prolonged social breather as well. We have an opportunity and, you know, in this kind of environment, uh hybrid and, and video, uh, we may well be able to put, uh, you know, a good amount of that infrastructure down in the uh upcoming years. So that's my question with regard to how is this person getting back and forth uh between your facilities and where they live? So uh Josh, why, yeah, not to put everything on you uh all at one time, but uh that's five council members' worth of uh questions and comments. Uh, do you care? I'm sure you do, uh, to uh provide some responses and um, you know, some, some thoughts as well.
Absolutely. Is my sound okay? Everyone can hear me?
You, you, you're audible, yes.
Okay, uh, thank you, Mayor.
Sure.
So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members and city staff. Uh, let me start with a note of gratitude. This is a fairly unique program to be offered on a local sale, scale at a city level. And I think it shows a level of investment in addressing some significant challenges our unhoused residents are facing. I'm grateful for the leadership and compassion of this council, certainly grateful for the, the vision of Councilmember Willie, but also the support of the rest of the council who said, yes, this is a good investment of public funds in having a transformative impact, sort of like Councilmember Way said, on two and now four people's lives. And when we think about ways that you all have the opportunity to use your power to make change and make positive change for folks, I, I want to recognize that this is, for me, is really an example, a high-level example of the incredible impact you all have as leaders in our community. I will answer all of your questions. I am gonna try to focus on a high level with my answers because we do want to maintain the respect and privacy of, of, of the folks who are enrolled in the program. To start with, Councilmember Moore's question, though, when I presented, I think I did reference, um, and exactly what you were referring to, Councilmember, when that uh client decided to um, that this was not the right time, they had already part, uh, partaken in a good deal of training. They were leaving the program, having participated in training that set them up for their next professional venture. Um, they didn't, they, so that, absolutely, you did hear that, and that was, that was accurate. So while the person left early, they didn't leave in a, you know, having benefited from participation, which I think was the point that you were making in your, in your observation.
Uh, uh, through the, through the mayor, um, my concern was that personal, personal challenges might be read by the community as they just couldn't work through the program, that they went back to being homeless. And, and, and this is, actually seems like a part of a success story we've got here. Okay, that was it.
Absolutely. Thank you for elevating that, Councilmember Moore. Um, in terms of the costs, and uh, this is Vice Mayor Chow mentioned cost. The major, the two major cost drivers of this program are the cost of housing and the cost of salaries. While salaries will be available in other job programs, what is unique about this program, what really sets up the folks who are enrolled to make that pathway towards self-sufficiency much more quickly, is that housing is baked into the program. In order for a person to be successful professionally or in all sorts of other ventures in their lives, they need two major things. They need a roof over their head and they need food. And once, we've noticed in our work, once a client has those two things, they're ready to begin to do the work that they have to do, the hard work of charting the pathway the rest of the way there. Now, there may be efficiencies if we grow the program, and I love the way some of you are talking about the capacity to grow the program. If you have more people, are there shared housing opportunities that will drive down the cost of the housing portion of this program? That is a possibility to explore. Um, wages will remain fixed, uh, based upon the number of folks that are in the program. But there are some economies of scale, Vice Mayor. I think, I think you and I are thinking similarly about the capacity for economies of scale as we look to whatever the future of this, of this could be. Um, and, and uh Mayor Paul, the one of the uh, one of the processes we go through as we're looking among all of our unhoused clients to determine um potential prospects for the program. One is interest in capacity and employment, readiness for employment. The other is the ability to come to West Valley. They are not housed in Cupertino because there isn't a place in Cupertino that works within the budget for the program, but they both have the capacity to get here. Um, and, and we're not concerned about their ability to fully participate uh either through private transportation or public transportation that's available for them to be here for their, for their shift.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, Josh. Uh, much appreciated. Um, and I'm thankful of our city manager and staff for bringing this forward. Thank you, Kiri, as well for providing us this update within, I believe, what is uh the first quarter of uh, of the fiscal year. So um excellent job. Let us go on to our next item. And so uh that is postponements and orders of the day. Are there any requests, Madam City Clerk, from staff to either postpone or reorder any of the items on our agenda?
No, Mayor.
Okay, thank you. And do I hear or see any requests from my fellow council members uh for postponements and orders of the day for our current agenda? I don't see any hands here, and so um let us go on to oral communications. Oral communications is reserved for persons wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council and not on the agenda. You'll have three minutes to speak. Um, I do note, I, I, I think there is a member of the public here for oral communications. Uh, and so let me, let me go ahead, uh, okay, so he's shaking his head, so no, no oral communications from public. Let's go ahead, uh, or I should say live uh in community hall. Let's go ahead to the uh Zoom hands, and right now I have Rahul, Rahul Vadodkar, Peggy Griffin, Jennifer, Judy Lomas, Venkat, Raga Nathan, and Ra, and Rahul again. Um, so we'll call on Rahul once, of course. Uh, now we have Lisa Warren and Rota Fry was up a moment ago. So, so the general rule, we'll uh go ahead and call on anyone whose hand is up by the time the uh first uh speaker gets done speaking. And so uh Rahul, you're the first hand up, and so you'll have three minutes to speak. Welcome. And now your hands down. Now your first hand's down, and so I will go to Peggy Griffin, uh, who is our uh first hand up. Welcome, Peggy.
Good eve, good evening, council. Um, good evening, uh, city council members and staff. The staff put together a nine- The staff put together a nice table of the 25-year cost analysis comparison for the two options for BlackBerry Farm Golf Course. I'd like to take a moment to review this table because I think it needs a few adjustments. Next slide, please. This is the table, and as you can see in red, the golf course costs the city more money. But as you see in green, it brings in a lot more money. And then in blue, over 25 years, the golf course is $2 million less expensive than option B. Next slide, please. I'd like to take a look at item three, revenue. Under option B, it's proposed that there'll be educational programming revenue that'll be 20K a year for 25 years. That's 500K a year for 25 years. And this is programs like ranger programs in classroom and on the trail, such as how ancient people lived off the land, ranger walks and interpretive programs. Next slide, please. On the left is a page of the Parks and Rec brochure, and it's got wildlife tracking, apex predators, a night hike with a ranger. I'm asking, are these courses, these 500K courses, very similar to offered? Perhaps. And is plowing up the golf course required to give these courses? I don't think so. So revision one, I would suggest that you add the 500K to option A side of the table. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. Yes. Revision two, no, go back, please. Thank you. Revision two, irrigation water cost. The number under two A, option A, is $1.575 million. This was calculated by taking the average cost over five years to $63,000 times 25 years. And that's how they got the number. But it does not include any consideration for the reduction in wasted water after the repairs are done. The irrigation system is going to be replaced. The pipes and leaking heads are going to be gone, more efficient targeted watering in times. The report said it was difficult to figure out the cost savings, so it got zero. I would suggest that, just being conservative, say it reduces the water usage 10%. Give it reduce the cost by 157.5. Next slide, please. Next slide, please. This is a summary. Revision two decreases the water usage. Revision one adds the programming to the side.
Peggy, your your time has elapsed. And so I understand that there are three people that are consolidating their time, I believe, and they had requested that you provide your presentation first, but they didn't actually request to cede over any time to to yours. And so do you know about how much longer? I guess we could try to consolidate another person's.
Give me, give me 15 seconds.
Okay, I want to be fair to everyone. So if if it would be amenable to the rest of your group here, I'm going to go ahead and move over a minute, but then the other will have a four-minute total. And so let me just check really quick with with at least one member. So Don Halsey, are you okay with consolidating your time with Peggy's? And Don, I've asked.
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. So Peggy, go ahead.
Okay, okay. With these changes, thank you. With these changes, the golf course saves the city $2.5 million. Next slide, please. And next slide, please. Yes. But I want you to think about a few other points. The golf fees are known to be too low. Just increasing it by a dollar would significantly increase the revenue. Parks and Rec beginning classes are waitlisted, so demand is high. Beginning course provides a unique activity for young and old, and the golf course serves a function that is not found anywhere else in Cupertino parks. Plus, grant funding potential may be available. So option A saves the city 2.5 million plus. Thank you, and thank you, Don.
Thank you very much, Peggy. Absolutely, you're welcome. And so we will go on to Jennifer, then Judy Lomas, Venkat Ranganathan, Lisa Warren, Rhoda Fry, Rahul, Rahul Vadikar, and Darren Stevens asked to consolidate with Ken Eng, who are the other two. So that'll be a four-minute presentation. And then Don Halsey has already ceded his consolidated time with with Peggy. And so let me check in with our city clerk. Madam City Clerk, were there any blue cards or emails that came in to you during this time?
I did receive one, Mayor.
For oral communications?
Yes, but I believe it came in after the first person was done speaking.
Okay, and I believe, okay. Well, let's go ahead and go on to Judy Lomas at this time. And Judy, welcome. But I will I will say that the first person was Peggy because the the actual first person was.
Oh, pardon me, then I did receive one.
Okay, great. Welcome, Jennifer.
Hello.
Oh, I'm sorry. Welcome, Judy. I apologize.
Oh. Okay, you can hear me?
We can hear you. Welcome.
Oh, awesome, because I've never done this before. I am one of the former owners of BlackBerry Farm. My family is the one that built the golf course, and we are the family that sold it to the city. I'm also a member of the Friends of the Golf Course, and I'm giving my time to any of those people that are there that can use it. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, thank you very much, Judy. Appreciate it. And so we will go on to Jennifer. Welcome, Jennifer. And Jennifer, you just lowered your hand, so I can't find you on the Zoom function. If you could raise your hand one more time so that I could unmute you.
Yes, I can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can, actually.
Yeah, I've had my hand up the entire time. Sorry if I sound cross. Okay, so I just sent you guys a email to the city council. It says, Dear City Council, the high-density housing bills and the ADU bills use terms like by right, ministerial, and streamlining. These terms just appear in the bill language and try to exclude the public. The public has no voice. These bills are taking advantage of the public. These bills are abusive to the public. There needs to be a study session on the terms by right, ministerial, and streamlined. These terms need to be discussed in public as they have never been discussed before, and they just appear in the bill's text. No one knows where these terms came from, who proposed them, and what what is their intent? I feel like their intent is to deceive the public. An open discussion of these terms needs to be held to allow healthy discussion of these terms, what they may or may not mean, and how their inclusion in the bill's wording is alienating, scaring, intimidating, excluding, disrespecting, and marginalizing the public. A discussion like this could lead to high-density housing bill reform by removing such slanderous and discriminatory wording as by right, ministerial, and streamlining by these bills in their text. Their wording is hurtful and demeaning to the public. Thank you sincerely, Jennifer Griffin. Thank you. I hope you can have a study session on this. I've thought about this for a long time, and it's been extremely frustrating for me as a member of the public, as an educated woman. I feel these words demean me being an adult, a senior. They're disrespectful. They they act like I have no right to live in my house, to own my property, to have been a tech worker in this valley. I have contributed to society. I tutored many, many students in statistics. But yet my state is telling me that my voice is not allowed to be heard. I'm being told that I have no worth as an individual, that my land can be run over and taken over by neighbors who don't care about what happens to my life and my infrastructure. I think we need to, the state is obviously not going to explain where this wording came from. So therefore, we have to draw our own conclusions. And I find all three of these words offensive, discriminatory, and making it seem like the public is of no worth. Please have a study session and send a message to this state. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Our next speaker is Venkat Ranganathan. Welcome, Venkat.
Good evening, Mayor, and the city council members and staff. My name is Venkat Ranganathan. I live near the Valco neighborhood on Amos Drive, a couple of hundred feet from the perimeter road. Let me begin by congratulating the city on the two proclamations and also on the successful completion of the homeless jobs program that we just heard. I'm here to speak about a person who is in need of a shelter that has decided to use the junction of Portal and Stevens Peak as an encampment. I just sent a few pictures. This particular junction is a busy one. It's used by several people to go to work more and more because it's a pathway to the big neighborhood around the Portal and Valco area. And more importantly, many children go to CHS and Collins Elementary using this junction. There are also a few shops in the strip mall that people frequent, and this kind of use of a busy sidewalk for encamping is a potential disaster waiting to occur in several dimensions. There can be traffic accidents, including affecting the person who is encamping there. There can be school kids are getting intimidated, and also potentially other social issues like drugs or something like that, which so far has not been an issue, I'm given, I'm told. As you can see, as you can see from the photos I have submitted, she is using portions of the sidewalk and park strip to collect her belongings. And she has been moving around the city, I'm told, and I don't, I'm not sure how she ended up here. My son, who goes to CHS, says he avoids this Chiqui cheese. He avoids the junction by taking the Chiqui cheese entrance closer to Portal. There is one entrance back on Portal that he uses to go to CHS. And I heard that from several others also. It's not clear how she lives there also because there is sanitation worries pertaining to her use or otherwise of the restroom facilities. And this is a big concern, just given we saw, given just we saw a COVID outbreak, and we are recovering from a pandemic repercussions and flu season is yet to come. So it's better, this is a big concern for our neighborhood, and lots of communication in different social media is being raised by several residents, and also we have been communicating with the city staff and making these, you know, raising it in other forms. We learned that there was a big encampment that was removed from San Jose Airport, and I saw there was a person in back of Target, but he has since moved, thankfully. And coming to this particular lady, I think we need to have some services like West Valley Services that you talked about in in connection with the in association with this county to help this person move from this place. Thank you. And that's all. I think she needs help, but and she needs to be moved to a shelter with whatever, you know, nonprofit, working with nonprofits and the county. Thanks.
Thank you, Venkat. Our next speaker is Lisa Warren. Welcome, Lisa. Welcome, Lisa.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
I have unstable service for some reason. Wanted to bring attention to a couple emails that I've sent you previously. I think the last one was yesterday. It's really encouraging the video of each. I can't, you guys are freezing. So I think it's really important for you to watch the meeting as much of it as you can and to also listen to comments such as Peggy Griffin's, who are just right on the analysis of the two choices. Her some additional note page tells a lot, summarizes much of what many people were saying during the meeting. And you also have a written communication from Emily Poon, who who speaks to the question about natural habitat not being necessary, really, for the Audubon Society's wishes, and I hope you've been able to read that. I I just urge you to remember, once a golf course is gone, it's gone. You can't get it back. And actually, potentially remind you that this is an opportunity to make a local decision because the state is not telling you what to do. So please make a decision when this comes back to you to maintain having the golf course available to our residents and surrounding city residents. It's it's a very important asset that we really can't afford to lose for something that we already have multiple places. And anyway, I'm babbling because I don't even know if you can hear me. So additionally, I asked at this planning commission meeting for them to consider an agenda, future agenda item to discuss what may be doable in coming up with objective standards such as some other language to assist in preventing the abuse of attached ADUs where really they're just being built mostly by developers coming in and buying up lots at a time, which they've done for years. But just to to be able to extend the amount of floor area ratio that a single-family home can have, and I can explain that during the study session or prior, how this is happening over and over again. And it's just an abuse of the law, and I'm hoping there's some way to help fix the language.
Thank you, Lisa. And we next have Rhoda Fry. Welcome, Rhoda.
Good evening, council members. I want to thank you for your excellent governance and accomplishments toward making our city better, especially when it comes to finances. It is stunning that our previous councils allowed our taxpayer funds to be embezzled for over a decade. By contrast, you've looked at the dollars and cents, and we are grateful. Thank you for putting an end to unnecessary and excessive expenditures, that's a tongue twister, at the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce. I'm sure the former city staff member intended to do right and appreciate your swift action to get us onto a better course. Specifically, the chamber was paid $65,000 to build a website called I Love Cupertino. Among other issues, the website directed visitors to chamber businesses that are outside of Cupertino. Incidentally, the trademark for the website was obtained by chamber member J.R. Fruen. Do we own that trademark now since we did pay $65,000 for it? Finally, unlike other organizations and businesses, the chamber paid no room rent in our city's buildings. So let's get to my ask for tonight. It's about golf. Doing away with a golf course has been considered a number of times by our council, and every time it comes back the same. Keep golf. The golf course is essentially a playing field that is used by people of all ages. We're not looking about getting rid of other playing fields. How many tax dollars have we spent on this lady's study? Can we just nip this thing in the bud and stop the expensive studies, staff times, and wear and tear on the public? I also think that our residents were given information that would encourage them toward getting rid of the golf course. As Peggy's presentation shows, the numbers just weren't quite right. You know, you're looking at $500,000 in education at the golf course, which could be used at McCollum Ranch or the Orange Orchard or anywhere and other places, while we could be generating income on the golf course. And frankly, I think that the golf course could actually make money for the city, but it's really great for recreation for people of all ages. So please, another thing I want you to consider is that the alternative proposal did not consider the need for an irrigated fire break and the cost of that water to protect the health and safety of our residents, particularly those on Burn Avenue. So please, let's just put our tax dollars toward completing the 2006 plan to fix the golf course and terminate these exhausting and expensive studies. I thank you very much.
Thank you, Rhoda. Our next speakers are Darren Stevens, consolidated with Ken Eng. You'll have a total of four minutes for your presentation. Darren and Ken, I will go ahead and unmute Darren, and if you would like to have Ken instead unmuted, let me know.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. My name is Darren Stevens.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor and City Council. My name is Darren Stevens. I'm a longtime resident, pediatric physical therapist in the area, and I've been playing Blackberry Farm Golf Course. I'm 48 years old. I've been playing it since I was about six years old with my dad. And now I've, over the past five years, been lucky enough to play it with my son, as well as with my dad, who is now 87 years old and still plays it. And I cannot over emphasize the value of the course for our family and other families. It is just an ideal course for introduction to golf. It is ideal course, it is an ideal course for a quick round with my family. Kids these days, recreation opportunities are really challenging, because you really have now got these crazy baseball and soccer situations where you have to commit to just one sport, and the poor kids just don't get a lot of variety. And golf is one of those sports that allows you to play it as a recreation and get out with your family. And Blackberry Farm honestly is the place that we go to because it is accessible, it is, to be honest, a little bit cheap. So it probably should be, the green fees probably should be raised to support the revenue. But it is just invaluable to my family and a lot of other people. My son has played with a lot of his friends. My ability from my 87-year-old dad, who can't walk quite as well as he used to, to go out and play a nice nine-hole course with his grandson is just amazing. And it really is not available very much outside of Blackberry Farm and maybe Sunken Gardens, a few others. But beyond that, it's just, the other ones are just inaccessible. So I plead, plead, plead with you to please preserve this amazing resource that we have. And as other people have said, it's, it's just, once you lose a golf course, you'll never get it back. And it is of value to Cupertino, and I think it should be preserved. Thank you for your time.
Okay, great. Well, thank you very much, Darren. And let me ask you, while you're, if you're still there, I'm assuming you were not consolidating your time. Is that correct? Because that was, that was under, actually, two minutes. Let me, Ken Eng, I'm going to go ahead and ask you, were you speaking?
Yeah. I thought you hadn't, I thought it was two minutes each, sorry.
Oh, sorry. No, it was actually a consolidated presentation based upon the request that was relayed through the city clerk. It was initially a consolidated request. So, so, okay, so we'll go ahead and call on Ken in order. And so next we have Rahul Vadukar. Rahul, welcome. And then Ken will be our final speaker.
Am I audible?
Yes, you're audible. Welcome.
Okay, yeah. So it's actually very difficult to speak after the spirited speeches by Rhoda and Darren. Good job, guys. So I'm talking about a different subject, and which is very similar to what Venkatesh has brought up. Can you please show the map that I had sent, Kirsten, while I speak? So this is about, this is at the corner of Stevens Creek and Portal, and we have an unhoused person there, sitting there for over a month. We are concerned not only about our, you know, city, but also about her. And I have written emails to all the five council members, and most of them have replied with details. So I thank you guys for that. City police also have tried to request to, you know, request her to seek help, go to shelter. And now she's refusing all the time. So that's what I've been told. I also created 311 requests, and they are immediately closed. I just get a, get a reply that, hey, please call this 299-2311. And when I call 299-2311, they say they can do nothing. They, sorry, they cannot do anything. Okay. So, so this is kind of, this worries me a lot, that how can we not help her, right? Last week, sweatering heat, 110 degrees, she's sitting there in 110 degrees. And last weekend was the rain. Somebody gave her a tent, which is fine. You know, you give a person a fish, you feed him for a day, you know, you teach them a fish, the fish, they're feeding for life. So just giving a tent is fine, but giving them a shelter is much better. Now, if she is not able to listen to us, there are a couple of ordinances I looked up. The one is littering ordinance, and which is 9 dot 18 dot 215. I even had created a 311 request. The number is 2937489, which was closed immediately. Another ordinance is loitering, 10 dot 56 dot 020. So these are the ordinances which she is flouting without any respect for, for our city. Now, I understand she needs help. No, I don't want anybody to be in her position. But since city and police are trying to help her, and she just refuses to accept help, can we not work with, with West Valley Community Services, you know, homeless to jobs, can they not create homeless-to-house program and, and, you know, help these people and help us also? You know, we live in Cupertino city. It's very, very difficult to see that. And as Venkatesh mentioned, a lot of kids go through that. They had to change their path. Now, it's not a big, big issue, but we don't know. This is just a beginning of the thing. Who knows how many people will come? Who knows Chakichis parking lot will be an encampment, right? So as somebody else said, we should nip it in the bud.
15 seconds.
Help her and help us. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rahul. And our final speaker is Ken Eng. Ken, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, city staff. Thank you for the opportunity for me to talk. Again, I'm part of Don's team and talk about the risk assessment for the Blackberry Farm, right? Don, are you there? Can you present? Put the presentation on, that one slide. I want to go over five risk assessments, okay? One of them is the, one of them is the drought, okay? That continues to be a problem, and it can get worse. And from this chart, we see that it's a moderate risk and impact is pretty moderate. But if we go with a natural habitat, it will use less water. But if we keep the golf course, we can probably continue to explore using portable recycled water. Risk assessment number two, okay, homeless encampment, okay? This has to do with the ability for homeless encampments around, if we have a golf course, then a lot less encampments will occur if we keep the golf course in the city of Cupertino. Risk assessment number three, wildfire, okay? It's very low risk, but it's very high impact, okay? As proven by previous golf courses, it's a natural fire break. So we see that keeping the golf course is really important for the homes in Cupertino, because it's a natural fire break. If we had a natural habitat all the way through, it would probably endanger a lot of homes in the modest area. Okay. Risk assessment number four, voter backlash. Okay, I know from the surveys, you see a lot of the Cupertino residents, 57%, favor getting rid of it, eliminating it. But during the public comments, you can see that we do have a lot of people that speak out in the favor of it, okay? So if you go outside of Cupertino, I think you see that it really serves the community. It doesn't just serve the city of Cupertino, okay? And the last risk assessment number five is wildlife death. If we extend the natural habitat, we're in the risk of, you know, on the Stevens Creek, of wild animals being killed, okay? That's very low impact and very moderate probability. That's all I have to say. Thank you very much for the time.
Okay, thank you, Ken. And we are now on to oral communications that went into our city clerk's email inbox during the first-person speaking. And Madam City Clerk, if you could read up to three minutes of that email into the public record.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. This email is from Caitlin Wong. Dear Mayor Paul and City Council members, thank you for the incredible job that you have been doing over the past four years. Since 2018, Cupertino's Resident Focus City Council has been addressing systemic issues in Cupertino's governmental operations that they inherited from previous city councils that were plagued by cronyism and incompetence. We will greatly miss Mayor Paul and Council Member Willie when they leave in office, leave office in December. Council Member Willie lives in my neighborhood and could often be seen taking, talking to residents about their concerns. I recently received a flyer in the mail from a group of former Cupertino mayors. The mayors on that flyer were directly responsible for most of Cupertino's woes during the past two decades, including the Valco fiasco, the loss of City Attorney Randy Hom, and the loss of City Manager Deb Fang. We must not reverse the tremendous gains made since 2018 under the leadership of Mayor Paul. The accomplishments of the Resident Focus City Council since 2018 include established objective standards for building heights at Valco, upsown sufficient land at Valco to meet the city's 2015 to 2023 housing element, funded and constructed the new library program room, funded the Via Shuttle, overturned the terrible Tier Two Valco project after residents signed petitions to put that approval on the ballot, funded the all-inclusive playground, rebuilt the community gardens at McClellan Ranch, purchased new parkland in eastern Cupertino at Lawrence Smithy, began the investigation of the Chamber of Commerce fraud, created the Jollyman Off-Leash Dog Area, enacted an ordinance requiring that paid lobbyists register with the city, hired an excellent new city attorney after a previous city council, and ethically got rid of city attorney Randy Hom after he tried to enforce state housing law. The developer-controlled city council cost Cupertino over $200,000 in settlement costs, solved the embezzlement case in the city's finance department, and recovered most of the money and established procedures to prevent this from reoccurring, approved a much better project at the Oaks than what the property owner originally proposed, guided the city through the COVID pandemic without any staff layoffs and without financial hardship for the city. Cupertino must not go backward to the days of fraud, corruption, and cronyism. Caitlin Wong, Cupertino resident.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. And that concludes oral communications. Let me go back up to my agenda here. We are now on the continuation of the special meeting study session. That, to remind everyone, was an SB nine-related study session. And so when we last, when we last broke on that item, which started at 5 o'clock, or 5:30 rather, and went until 6:30, we were taking a straw poll of the first item. And so there were five areas that staff sought input from council regarding. And so I was going through each of those items one at a time and trying to get a brief sentiment from city council as to where people stood on each of these items. And so let me go ahead and remind everyone, by way of shorthand, they were flaglots, balconies, the grade, a potential for zero-foot setback, and a second-story envelope. And so with regard to flaglots, I'm going to go ahead and move on to the balconies issue. With regard to my, my fellow council members, we're taking just a quick straw poll. And so it's just a matter of trying to get a sense of where you stand. Let's go ahead and say that, to the extent that there was a staff recommendation, that would be one of your options. The other option would be the alternative provided by staff. And then for the second-story envelope, the third one, the fifth one, rather, there wasn't so much of a direct staff recommendation there. So you could kind of give us your general thoughts. And then with the flaglots, there were a couple of council members that wanted some follow-up information. And so if you want follow-up information, let us know in what direction you're, you're inclined, so that that follow-up information can be supplemented by the time we get back to this item. And I believe that it was slated for an estimated time of November 1st, because we're looking to go out to the public next week on this SB nine issue. So now we're on balconies. Let me see what order we were asking people in, if I can retrieve this in my notes. I believe it was Councilmember Willie, Councilmember Moore, Councilmember Wei, then Vice Mayor Chow, and then I weighed in on this. And so again, we're on balconies. Councilmember Willie, thoughts on balconies on these lot-split units for under SB nine?
Yeah, so I'm going to repeat myself again. You know, my, my main focus is on privacy protection. And when we are now having more structures on the same piece of land, and the neighboring parcels purchase their houses expecting it to be that, that type of a neighborhood, and then a second structure and having balconies that are now overlooking them, I, I have a real concern. The one thing that I would toss out, maybe a little bit irregular, but I'll still toss it out, for the resident that was actually, you know, bringing us his case in point and felt that a flaglot would be a benefit.
Councilmember Willie, let me, does this have to do with balconies, or are you going back to flaglots at this point?
It has to do with balconies.
As pertains to flaglots? So, so let's, let's just try to keep it narrow and just try to remember my, my request to kind of keep it. So I'm hearing what you're saying on balconies, basically no, right? Premised on privacy concerns.
Until we have some, some assurance that adjacent parcel, adjacent houses are not going to be significantly impacted.
Okay.
And we previously did have a, an appeal that came to us for an oversized balcony. And we heard from the adjacent neighbors and how they felt it would impact them. So at this point in time, I have to default back to not balconies on these in large or multiple structures on the same size lot.
Yeah, let's just try to, oh, and just to remind everyone, we're, we're trying to keep this, not to remind, because I didn't initially say it, 45 minutes or so. So we're actually right on time with regard to our estimated time. So 7:45 to about 8:30. And then at 8:30, I'll go ahead and check in with everyone. At that point, we may need to just continue the item in order to get through the, the rest of the items. We might, you know, kind of stick the rest of the discussion at the end, or we'll, we'll figure out what makes sense at that time. But, you know, of course, we have a timetable, so it's a, it's probably something that we would need to finish, frankly. So let's go on to Councilmember Moore. For balconies, Councilmember Moore, what are your thoughts? Do you, are you thinking to, you know, keep the restriction that we have only for R1, expand it to include what we're talking about here? Need more study. What are your thoughts?
Thank you. I would like to have some clarification from someone from planning, perhaps. So the option is, we're looking at the A or B option, and B seems to say that there's no route to getting a balcony. Is that, do I have that right?
Yeah, B, B is the expansion of the restriction, essentially.
Mr. Mayor, if I may answer that question.
Pamela, you, yes.
Councilmember Moore, and through the mayor, if I may. So this is only pertaining to SB nine. So I just want council members to understand that we're not precluding second-story balcony or any other consideration. This is only for SB nine. So if a project qualifies for SB nine, currently, the ordinance does not allow for these considerations that's been brought forward to you. There has not been any application submitted to us for review. There has been requests from the public or maybe council member to consider these areas. They might be one or two. So in terms of second-story addition, second-story balcony or even flagline, we don't want to go back, but this is only pertaining to SB nine. So that means that if you are on the regular process, you can still have a way to get a second-story balcony.
Okay, so, but, but there's, there are R1 restrictions on second-story balconies as they exist.
So it's not a ministerial process. You have to go through a discretionary review and possibly with more staff review.
Right. I mean, I, I think Councilmember Moore's comment and question was basically geared towards the idea that, you know, what's, what's the difference between essentially option A and B? And A seemed to be, you know, kind of keeping our current regime, which would not restrict it under the SB nine invocation. Or option B would be to actually modify our code such that it was, you know, placed into the restrictions for SB nine. Is that, so I see our city attorney has a microphone on now.
Yeah, maybe I'll just attempt to clarify things. So, so, so there, there are really three options. So the first is our current, our current interim ordinance does not allow any balconies for SB nine projects in R1 zones. So that could be expanded to RHS, which my understanding is it doesn't currently apply. Also, in, in, in R1 zones, an applicant under our current ordinance is allowed to seek a discretionary two-story balcony permit after applying for an SB nine project. And so that would be the discretionary process. It's a staff-level decision in the first instance, but there is, there are opportunities for appeal to the Planning Commission and City Council. So, 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 so that's, that's, that's the current status quo. And the council could consider the option of eliminating that ability to get a discretionary permit for any project that was approved through the SB nine process, just meaning no balconies for that, on that structure, period. The third option would be to direct staff to come up with some process for allowing SB balcony. for allowing SB balconies in SB nine projects through a ministerial process. So it's a bit complicated, but I hope that helps clarify things.
Yeah, it's, it's, I think you spoke it clearly, but there are a lot of different parts. And the clearest one, of course, is just that second option where essentially the balconies are foreclosed.
Right, yeah, no balconies is pretty straightforward, yes.
Okay. All right, well, Councilmember Moore, thanks for allowing the quick interruption. Hopefully that was a good clarification. I, I'm sorry, my, my Zoom camera is this way, but my screen is this way. So I apologize if it doesn't look like on Zoom. I'm looking at you.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate everyone jumping in on that. I'd like to hear from Pew. It sounds as though we can go with no balconies for R1, but we do currently have a path to having them. We can expand it to RHS and give them a path to having a balcony by discretionary approval or say no to everybody. Do I have a?
If I may, and I'm sorry, we, we are part of the forum here, so I apologize for that. Balconies under the current interim regulations are not allowed in both R1 and RHS zones.
Oh, okay.
So I wanted to make that clear first. But that is only for SB nine development, right? So, so if you came in and you wanted to get a ministerial permit to build a house, you could not have a balcony. Subsequent to building your house under SB nine, you could apply for a permit. In R1 zones, this is through a discretionary ministerial permit. I'm sorry, a minor residential permit. And then in R1, RHS zones, it's with a building permit. That, that's what is current, what the current pathway is. Of course, what one could do is subdivide under SB nine, but then also build the house under our discretionary rules. So there is that pathway too, to get to a house with a balcony. Our question really is, one, do you want to prohibit balconies with SB nine projects as it currently stands? To keep our current rules, gives options to people to come in to build a balcony after they build their home under SB nine regulations? Or do we want to close that pathway down altogether? And say, if you developed your lot or the house under SB nine regulations, then you're not allowed a balcony ever? That's, that's the question, if that makes sense.
Okay, so my preference is that we have, that it's a discretionary approval. And if there's problem with, from the neighbors, that we, that, that we get to talk about it. We have had so many of these, the balconies upsetting, upsetting the neighbors. And it comes to council, it goes to, or to the Planning Commission, and it, it is, they are very contentious. So I, I like, I like that there is a discretionary path, but I'm also somewhat leaning towards having, having none, none of them. If, if it ends up being that we've got multiple projects coming to, coming to the city and we've just created a, a, a big headache for ourselves. So I, I, because we haven't had any applicants, I don't really know if it's working or not at this point. But it, and I see your hands raised.
I, I did want to point out that in RHS zones, balconies are allowed with just a building permit. And that is, you know, traditionally a function of how large the RHS lots are. We do have some smaller RHS lots that are kind of at the foothill. And with SB nine, if those are subdivided, that might result in balconies getting closer and this becoming more of an issue even in RHS zones. But because they would be approved with building permits, that may, you know, there would may not be a path for somebody to appeal that. It would not be a discretionary decision in the RHS zones.
Okay, and remind me, what, what is the rule for, right now for, for RHS? It is for?
There actually are no privacy considerations in RHS just because of how large the lots are. And so, and then considering existing foliage or also on these lots. So it's, it's never really been an issue. So they're just built with building permits.
But now they've got a four-foot side yard.
Correct, and so that, that is the question, you know, should, should that door be closed? Or does the council want to impose some privacy restrictions on balconies on these smaller, you know, SB nine lots now? Because things can get closer. But for balconies, the council could impose a larger setback. It doesn't have to be at a four-foot setback for balconies. So that is up to the council's discretion.
Okay, so, so I would suggest that we have a, a larger setback for the RHS lots. I don't know what that number would be, but something that would pretty much ensure that we're not going to be flooded with neighbor complaints. That would, I think that would be smart.
Okay, okay.
It's a free gift essentially. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Moore. Next, we'll go to Councilmember Wei on this balconies issue.
Okay.
Don't use your laptop, use your microphone, guys.
I like to just reemphasize that one-size-fits-all is not good. And also the most restrictive rules may not be the most beneficial to our neighborhoods. That said, I do believe privacy needs to be paid attention to. So I would really support having some flexibility with discretionary process. And also on page 55, number nine, that's the one I actually forgot to mention. That's, I couldn't find it. Shall we, because it's very restricted. It says balconies needs to be substantially enclosed for second-story decks, balconies, or similar features. If we have really large lots that really doesn't look into anybody's privacy, shall we allow the flexibility for these large lots to have not substantially enclosed second-story decks, balconies, and similarity? You know, personally, I do believe flexibility and, you know, discretionary process would be best for our residents, for the neighborhood. You know, we are building homes. We're not building apartments or anything. We're building homes to fit people's, our residents' needs. So to be resident-centered, I do think we need to provide discretionary and flexibility in balcony and decks issues. That's my comment.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Wei. And then we'll go to Vice Mayor Chow on the issue of balconies.
Well, so a question. So current RHS zone does not need discretionary approval because the lot is large enough. Then the question is, once they are subdivided under SB nine, are they still large enough so they, there is no concern for neighbors?
This is what I was saying. There are fairly large lots up in the hillsides as well, but then there are some that are not particularly large. They, they are 10, 12,000 square feet. They're not necessarily very large. And it also runs into slope issues. So you do have more view issues potentially when new lots are created as a result of SB nine. So that could be something. However, I mean, if there is development of slopes that are greater than 30%, you know, we do require hillside exceptions and things like that. So if we leave the rules as they are in place, you know, we, potentially, if the slope is big enough, you know, and they're, they're building a big enough deck, presumably we, we have discretion on those. The, the rub comes in when, you know, it's a smaller lot and, and you don't need anything other than a permit.
But we do have smaller lot that's RHS.
Correct.
Right now. And that's an issue, I think, if we do one-size-fits-all and say, oh, RHS can do this or that. For some of those smaller lots, their neighbors might not be happy, happy when the SB nine project is streamlined.
Correct. So I mean, there, there's two ways to approach it. Either, you know, we try to figure out what that breakpoint is, you know, what is a smaller lot? What's a larger lot? And then come up with rules separately for the two kinds? Or, you know, the easiest is to say?
All balconies should be discretionary approval because we can't really come up with rules ahead of time.
Correct.
So maybe the current rule is good, except the current rule, as I understand, for RHS site, they, once subdivided, they will go through, they just need a building permit. So there is no discretionary approval. So the staff recommendation is likely we might not, we might require discretionary approval for balcony for RHS lot that's a result of SB nine lot split, right?
Potentially, we haven't landed on a solution just yet.
So that's a potential option to, to add, to protect those neighbors who are neighbor to a smaller RS, RHS lots. Okay, thank you. So I think maybe next time this comes to the council, it would be great if the staff report could clearly specify what it means to be minister approval or by right approval versus discretionary. I don't think people understand that. People thought it's just SB nine lot split. But I think the staff report made some really good point, but they are kind of buried inside each item. So if they can be pulled out upfront and describe why, why we are concerned when we are being, we are not being restrictive because we are restrictive because SB nine is minister approval. I think for example, staff report says, due to minister nature of development under SB nine, and anyway, so I shouldn't read that. But it's, it does make it clear that it's minister approval. When we provide that flexibility, we actually take away flexibility of their neighbors to appeal, to provide their opinions, so.
Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, we've got three more to get through here. So, yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and put in my, and, and just to kind of signpost this, I, I'm not going to take a motion on this. I, I think we can basically go ahead and take council input and have staff follow up with regard to what comes back to us later. So I, I'm, I'm really not, you know, optimistic about our ability to consolidate all of this into a set of recommendations. But, but, but I think a lot of these input points are really quite valuable and, and, you know, actionable. So for my part, I think it does make sense to have a discretionary process that takes into account public input if we can't have an appeals process. And so what I would, what I would suggest is that the staff actively go out to the neighbors and get input, you know, from them. Because essentially, the appeal process, if we were able to have one, would recruit the neighbor sentiment. So the people that are going to be appealing, if we were able to have an appeal, and correct me if I'm wrong, if we're able to have one in a discretionary process, they, they would be coming from the surrounding and adjacent lots anyway, right? So.
So, so there, you know, so, yeah, so there's, there's no public hearing allowed under SB nine. And there is a notice process in the current ordinance. However, there's strict limitations on sort of, you know, how that input could be taken into account. The, the statute expressly requires that the decision to approve or deny a project is made based on existing objective standards that are, are published and, and, and can be applied by staff without the exercise of discretion.
But if we're talking about a discretionary process of staff with regard to the building and the balconies, are we basically precluded from doing that under the strictures of, of this legislation?
So, so Pew can comment on the details of the discretionary, the staff-level discretionary process, but there is an opportunity for public input into that process.
Okay, so Pew, why don't you speak to that? Because I, I think you know the parameters of what we're looking for, right?
I get it. I, I understand where the council is coming from. So I, I think it might be structured as such, and maybe Chris, you can help me if I stumble on this. I, I think for the SB nine development itself, I think we will preclude balconies from being constructed with the SB nine ministerial process. However, we could potentially set up a process after the fact where somebody could come in for a discretionary balcony-only permit or whatever we call that. That is not a ministerial, but that's more of a discretionary process. So if, if I'm in the right direction, I mean, you know, it, it's not tied to the SB nine permit. It would be a separate permit process that one would have to go through.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, I appreciate that, Pew. That, that possibility actually occurred to me, but I wasn't sure whether it would be, it, it would be received in a, in a, in a willing manner because, of course, then it becomes a two-step process. But, but yeah, I mean, I think that, that's probably, if you kind of decision tree it out in terms of what's definitive and achievable, that's, that's probably the, the way to go on this one.
Right, we can't have the discretion with the, with the SB nine permit. So we can't build that into.
Got it, got it. Okay, so let's go to the five, well, the grade. So the question of the grade, we'll start with Councilmember Willie again. And so Councilmember Willie, your, your thoughts on this? And, you know, I apologize to my fellow colleagues. It occurs to me that we probably should have round-robin it, starting at a different person each time. But, you know, we're in for a penny, in for a pound. We're already three into this. So Councilmember Willie, why don't you start us off on this one?
Yeah, so not sure if it would be Pew or Emmy, but you know, when you had the picture up there showing the side view with the 20-foot garage, the question that I'm going to be asking is, you know, under our current ordinances, you know, SB nine isn't changing the shape or slope of the lot. Has there been an issue with our current process? And I hesitate to, you know, change things, as Councilman Moore was saying, unintended consequences. You know, we're going to be rolling out this SB nine. I mean, we have our interim ordinance. And it's going to take a little while before the permits start trickling in, structures start getting built, and neighbors start finding out what their concerns are. And so I would hesitate unless, unless staff, I'm not sure if it's Pew or Emmy, can, you know, enlighten me in terms of why it would need to be different or the benefit of making it different for SB nine over the current rules. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. Let's move on to, I believe it was Councilmember Moore, who was next.
Again, I will need some clarification. When I'm looking at the slides, slide deck 21, the grade change limitation, could, could you please explain again? This urban lot splits, change in natural grade greater than six inches is disallowed. What in, what's the difference between that and the, and SB nine? And it says it does not apply to homes built under SB nine. So could, could that be explained again? For some reason, it's, it's not making a lot of sense to me.
I can start us off with that. So currently, under our discretionary processes, we have a lot of discretion in terms of how much grading we allow or disallow on a property with subdivision particularly because we can rely on our engineers, we can rely on grade changes and things like that to decide, you know, here's how much you can raise your pad up or pad down, depending on what you want to do. With SB nine, because everything needs to be objective, we did with the original interim regulations establish that change in grade to be six inches. We basically said that you could either, you know, between your grading up and grading down, you can change the grade by about six inches. We anticipated that, of course, we were thinking mainly of valley floor lots. And then we realized that we were also looking at RHS lots, hillsides. The grade change is pretty significantly, pretty fast. And so in order to accommodate something as simple as a, as a garage slab, for example, while with SB nine development, we can only allow, require a one-car garage, even that needs to be a certain depth. And the minute you get to that depth, and even with a very slight slope, you actually need to cut in quite a bit to get that level pad for that garage. And so as a result, you know, we started to think about it more and we realized that we need to possibly amend those regulations to allow what could be considered a reasonable development. So if somebody wanted to build, you know, a garage depth, plus let's say another 20-foot room behind it, like a family room, 25-foot deep family room behind it, on a five-foot slope, you're looking at at least a two to two-and-a-half-foot grade change with that. If, if it was a steady five-foot slope across the whole site. And so the six inches gets really hard to meet when, when you have a five, even a 5% slope. So that, that's one of the reasons why we were looking at deciding, how do we address this? And we're thinking of doing some sort of a, like, almost like a formulaic way of approaching it potentially. Like if you're between 0 to 5% slope, you know, here's how much grade change you're allowed. If you're, if you're above 5%, you know, here's how much you're allowed. Or if you're above 5%, then you need to have a stepped foundation. Like you cannot basically have, you know, the whole thing be cut down. You can't have like a five-foot grade change with your subdivision. And part of it is because we don't have that discretion, because we have to be objective about how we allow the projects. about how we, uh, allow the, the projects to move forward. If, if that explains it. If it doesn't, Emmy can try again.
Well, it, it looks like, thank you. It looks like you're trying, uh, B would be to modify the regulations and apply to both the urban lot splits and the SB nine developments.
Correct.
So that looks like we're trying to fix some existing, our existing rules.
Right. Because the six-inch rule is established only with the SB nine subdivisions.
Uh.
The urban lot split.
Okay. Okay. Um, and I guess my concern would be if we, if we changed it yours, you could, when, when are they digging so far into the hill that it counts as a basement? And if they're going from natural grade and then 28 feet up, and they've now dug, you know, four, we'll say five feet, five feet in or, or, or maybe more, and they've got essentially three stories there.
That's a quirk of the hillsides and, and, um, essentially, um, if you can walk out from a floor onto grade, so essentially even if you're, the back of the house is dug in five feet and the, but the front is exposed, that's still considered a level. It's not considered a basement at that point. Um, so it still counts towards FAR and everything, but we're trying to make sure that you don't dig in too much. And I think Emmy has a, has a couple of images that we wanted to maybe share.
And, and if there, is there any requirement to balance cut and fill on the site?
Um, there isn't necessarily at this point. Um, so, uh, we just wanted to share with you, you know, the, the, these are some ways that people could develop in the hills, right? In order to get a flat, completely flat, level floor, some people could put, uh, a house on stilts. On the flip side, some people could, would want to, uh, you know, split, have a split level. So essentially, the whole point is to try to get more to the split level piece of it so that there isn't, um, you know, uh, the house doesn't stick out as much, uh, from the, um, from the hillside, and also to make sure that we're not digging in too much far in, you know, too far back into the hill. So this is another, uh, example of how development could occur. I mean, if you look at the image on the top, that is kind of a balanced site in a sense because you cut and fill is about even. And on the flip side, you could also step, um, and have a split, uh, foundation where you have the house on different levels, you aren't digging up as much either.
Okay. Um, through the mayor, if you could go back to the previous slide, I would hope that we would discourage the house on stilts since this is in order to increase housing, having all that open space underneath there just seems like a complete waste. So if that could not, not just be discouraged, but, uh, you know, not allowed to have that happen, um, that, that would be good. So are, 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 under SB nine, would they, if we're looking at the house on stilts, they are, okay, if we're looking at the house on stilts, could they have their ADU be underneath? Is that possible?
Sure. Anything's possible as far as ADU is concerned.
Okay. So it doesn't have to be separate on the side or anything? It could be?
It could be part of it, but there's, we can't force that issue. Um, they could build it anywhere on the lot.
Okay. But design-wise, they could do that, and then, and then you have a, you, you would need a cut there. Yeah, they probably, on that site, spread the soil around, um, as opposed to having a haul-off. Um, boy, this is complicated.
Welcome to my world.
Yeah. Um, mayor.
Oh, yes, please go ahead, Chris.
Yeah, so, yeah, I mean, it is complicated. I just, I, I think it might be helpful just to bring the council back to sort of why we're, we're looking at this at, at a higher level. Um, so, I mean, these are the, we're looking at the rules we adopted last year, and, um, there, there are two things that we're looking at, at changing. One is, um, as Councilmember Moore pointed out, to, to make sure that, that these grading restrictions capture duplex development as well as just, um, subdivision, uh, um, under, allowed under the statute. And, and two is, is reconsidering some of the, the, the grading rules that, um, uh, appear to be pretty restrictive in some cases and, and might limit what we would think to be reasonable development under the statute. And I think what we've always tried to, to emphasize in this process is the staff's recommendation is to come up with a balanced approach, um, you know, that allows for a reasonable level of development consistent with the statute, but, you know, responds to council and community concerns as much as possible, uh, to address concerns like, like, like privacy and in this case, environmental impact. And, and so, I, I mean, I think the staff recommendation is, is here to adjust the balance to, to make the, the standards for grading, um, a little bit more accessible to some people. Uh, and, and so that will, you know, allow more projects to proceed under, uh, objective standards and, um, you know, perhaps steer people away from the default, which is, you know, two 800 square foot units with really, aren't, without a lot of objective standards that apply to them. So, so, um, I, I think that's, um, sort of at a high level explaining the direction that, that staff is recommending in this case.
Understood. Understood. Okay. So let's just bring this back. Um, so, um, Councilmember Moore, do you have any, um, kind of, uh, wrap-up thoughts on this before we move on to Councilmember Wei?
Um, my sense is to modify the regulations, uh, in a, in a rational way, um, so that they can, you, so you can increase the housing supply, um, and not have it just be the little, the six-inch, um, requirement, looking at those steeper lots in particular, what can be done to, um, make it more rational?
Okay. Sounds good. Councilmember Wei.
Okay. Thank, thank you.
Yeah, dice.
Thank you, Mayor Paul. Um, so I do agree with, um, um, the staff's recommendation and, um, Attorney Chris's, uh, explanation. I do think, again, I want to emphasize, we are looking at residents. We, we are residents-focused, and these are homes of our residents. And we should make it flexible enough so that they can really reasonably, rationally build something that the community would accept, and because that's their neighbors too. But we are dealing with residents. So I'm hoping that we would, um, have that grading flexibility built in there so that, um, to make design and development easier for the residents who want to really, um, do something about their home and their lot. So I think, um, I would go with the staff's recommendation to be, uh, a more, uh, to build in some flexibility and, um, to make sure. So I did ask the question about what are the legitimate reasons for a resident to request a grade, uh, level more than six inches? So there are legitimate ways, they need that in order to build something that's safe and, uh, uh, that the community would accept. So I would hope that, um, we could, uh, go with that route. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Wei. Vice Mayor Chow.
Yeah, I would, uh, support the staff recommendation too. I really appreciate the staff. Uh, they mentioned, uh, they realized that the current regulation has certain limitation and, but then they also recognize the limitation of SB nine in terms of minister approval, so they recommend making minor changes that's sensible. I think this goes along with what Councilmember Moore says also. So I think the staff really has done a lot of research in this, and thank you for all the great examples of pictures, uh, to help us, us understand. Really appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. Um, yes, I'm fine with the staff recommendation as well, but I think that the, um, you know, the, the proceeding of this is basically to come back at us and try to find some of those refinements that we could be potentially injecting into, you know, what we consider next. So, all right, we're on to the next, uh, request, and I, I believe that's, uh, the fourth one, the zero-foot setback. Councilmember Willie.
Um, again, you know, I'll go back to pictures and the picture that staff had of the, uh, zero-foot setback with it looking like one structure. And so, I mean, it would help if they put that up. Um, so I, I would tend to think that if we're talking about a duplex, not a lot split, a duplex, that, um, this would be a common, um, thing that we would see out there for duplexes. If they truly are splitting the lot and they're going to have separate, uh, um, parcels with separate owners, I think we should maintain that each lot has, you know, its, uh, respective, um, setback, and that will keep the, the, uh, appearance of our neighborhoods as opposed to it really wind up being a mishmash of zero lot line, uh, developments as you're going down the streets and seeing houses with no lot line or in no setback at all, and then houses with their setbacks. If it is a duplex, it's considered, you know, one parcel and, um, a contiguous structure. But if it's two parcels, then I think we need to, at least for the time being, keep a minimum setback, um, for our residential neighborhoods. And I'll leave it at that.
Okay. Thank you very much, Councilmember Willie. Let's go on to Councilmember Moore.
Okay. Uh, thank you, mayor. I, I think what I'm hearing is that Councilmember Willie supports the upper, um, design and not the, um, not the, uh, the zero-foot setback, if I followed along correctly. Okay. Um, I actually, I actually support the zero-foot setback. In, in this, in this particular one, Cupertino's going beyond the, the SB nine requirements and being, um, less, less restrictive because the, the original would have had, uh, you 16, 16 feet of open strips, essentially. You've got your four, 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 and four, and then now we're going to 10 feet. And, um, in that way, we're, we're being less restrictive, understanding this correctly. Um, so I'm, I'm actually in support of the zero-foot setback with the staff clarifications A through C on slide 27. Um, so my, my preference would be to modify the regulations to, um, clarify the objective design standards suggested by staff and keep the zero-foot setback. And that was a suggestion from, um, the vice mayor, and I, I think it's, uh, I think it's, uh, helpful. Okay. That's it.
Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Wei on the zero-foot setback question.
Um, I agree with Councilmember Moore. I do think, uh, flexibility in zero, I have, I own place in sound, say, with zero, uh, setback language, a single-family home. It really, you get more site yards, and so it's actually had more privacy with your neighbors. It really is a, um, plus, especially for, uh, lots that's smaller. It really gave you a privacy, um, you know, distance with your neighbors. So I, I'm very supportive of this, uh, recommendation.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Wei. Let's go on to Vice Mayor Chow.
I support the staff recommendation to provide, uh, um, clarify objective standards for this. Thank you.
Uh, yes, I, I actually live in a single-family attached. I think it actually, uh, works out pretty well, so I'm, I'm going to go ahead and, you know, go, and, and get behind the staff recommendation on this one, too. I thought it was reasonably well-thought-out and, you know, it can, uh, deliver some, uh, fairly, fairly decent inventory, um, you know, so, um, okay. Let's, let's go on to the second-story envelope, uh, question. Councilmember Willie, let's start off with you again on the second-story envelope.
I think for right now, I'll pass because I don't have any comments, uh, beyond what I did, uh, said the last time. Maybe after everybody's commented, that may prompt something.
Okay. I think that is very reasonable. Uh, thank you, Councilmember Willie. Let's go to, uh, Councilmember Moore.
Okay. Um, I have a clarifying question on the second-story envelope as it would apply to the zero-foot setback duplex example. How does that work?
So it would be the portions that are at the zero-foot setback would be exempt.
Okay. Okay. So I just look at this as being one, one large home then?
Yeah.
And, okay. Okay. Um, so I, my inclination was, uh, to retain the existing building envelope regulations.
Okay. Thank you, Councilmember Moore. Councilmember Wei.
Yeah.
Dice Mike, yeah.
Um, I am, uh, okay with the staff recommendation.
Okay. Councilmember, uh, Wei, thank you very much. Vice Mayor Chow.
Uh, yes, support the staff recommendation to retain the existing regulation.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Chow. I also support the staff recommendation. Let's go back to Councilmember Willie.
Yeah, I'll follow and support staff.
Okay. Uh, great. Um, I, I just want to do one quick cleanup question. On the, on the, on the grade question, when we talk about supporting staff recommendation, are we including, okay, so I, I noticed in the staff report, uh, I think this is super enumerated page 16, uh, staff report page six, there were three examples from, um, neighboring cities of Campbell, LaScatos, and LaSaltos. So does the staff recommendation incorporate all three of those descriptions? Or is it just a certain amount of them? Or is, or is the general, or is the general recommendation a qualitative one, that this is a work in progress and will bring you back something that, you know?
I, 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 I will, um, let Pew answer this question, but my understanding is that it's, they're still, um, formulating the exact, um, language, and we would bring that back with the ordinance.
Okay. Okay. So we're, we're kind of putting, um, this issue in, in, in your hands, I guess. Is that kind of the, uh, the understanding there, uh, Pew, as well, with, uh, your side?
Correct. Yeah. With, with everything that we heard tonight, we're going to take that back and we're going to come up with some sort of a, formulate some sort of a, a recommendation based on that.
Yeah. Yeah, I would, no, I would say that, um, yeah, that's, that's, that's fair, you know, and I, I will say your house on stilts is pretty well-chosen. I think you achieved the intended effect.
It was the first one, honestly.
Yeah. Okay. Um, but, uh, okay. Uh, sounds good. Uh, Vice Mayor Chow, your hand is raised, and I'm not sure if, uh, Councilmember Wei is also raising her hand. So let's, um, I, I forget the order. I think Councilmember Wei, uh, you go before Vice Mayor Chow in the order, so are there any other final thoughts here? We have a couple, I, I was trying to wrap us up by 8:30 or so, so we could take a brief break. Um, but Councilmember Wei and the Vice Mayor Chow perhaps? Okay. Yeah, please, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor Paul.
I kept on doing it. Okay. I would like to revisit, um, the page 49 and 50 on the, um, especially on the B, the larger unit in a duplex develop, development should not, should be no more than 200 feet greater than the smallest unit. Let me give you a scenario. Say, uh, somebody is building a duplex and it's 800 feet, 800 feet maximum, so 1,600 feet, um, square feet, uh, maximum. So if this family has two kids and, um, a couple grandparents, and they want to build a smaller unit for the grandparents and a larger unit for the four family to live in, this scenario will limit one to 700 units, the other one 900 units. It would not fit this family's needs. I do think we need to be a little bit more flexible. If someone needs to have a family of four or five living in a duplex and have a granny, a grandmother, or a couple grandparents leave another one, we should be able to provide them with, build a three-bedroom and, and maybe a one-bedroom. So it may be a 600 and 1,200 so that they can accommodate this family. I really think this is pretty restrictive, so I would like, I'm hoping that, uh, the council can revisit it and have the staff take a look at it, maybe, um, propose, um, a different, um, square footage limit to it. And then, um, the second one is, I really have an issue with the 2,000, uh, maximum. Uh, I, I get it. I, I asked the staff, the explanation is, you know, it only affects maybe up to 100 lots, and we can still build more, uh, you know, according to other standards. But I do think if this is only affecting a small percentage, why put it in there? Because I do get a sense that this could get some objections from certain groups. It's not that we're afraid of them, but if we could be more flexible and not put this in there, and looking at just a very small, um, um, percentage of housing that could, um, exceed this limit, I do think we should reconsider if we want to be, uh, putting that 2,000 square feet, um, restriction in our ordinance to, um, to me, it's, it, it doesn't make sense. I think if we don't do it, it's not going to affect SB nine projects in our, uh, city anyway.
Okay. Let's wrap.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks, Councilmember Wei. Let's go to, uh, Vice Mayor Chow at this time.
Uh, hi. I support Councilmember Wei's first suggestion that the limit of 200 feet difference is too small, and I, I, yeah, I think one-bedroom and three-bedroom, um, division should be fine, and especially for some lots, maybe they have existing homes and they would like to subdivide, uh, a portion out. That should be allowed. Um, but staff might have other considerations, so if staff can come back with, uh, suggestions, that would be great. And one more point, I remember last time, we had discussion of, uh, whether we allowed the lot to be sold separately. I forgot what, what's, uh, what's in our current interim ordinance. I couldn't bring it up. I couldn't bring it up right now. The internet somehow doesn't download that file.
Okay. I think our city attorney has a microphone on.
Yeah. So I believe that the council's direction in the interim ordinance was to make these projects ineligible for condominium conversion. Council could, of course, revisit that in the permanent ordinance. I think it would be important to get direction here if you wanted the staff to go in that direction.
Yeah. I'm willing to reconsider that. At that time, it was interns. I think, I want to think more about it, so.
Let's go ahead and move on to anyone else who has further comments at this time. I don't see any hands raised from my fellow members on council. I'm not sure how staff will take the comments from Councilmembers Roy and Vice Mayor Chow in terms of the direction. I don't, I don't glean a majority with regard to going forward on these two points, unless, again, another council member. So perhaps take it under advisement, and I would suggest, under your discretion, perhaps retain some flexibility in what you bring back, but I don't think that it's, well, the city attorney indicated that there would be good, it would be good to get some clarity on this last point.
On the condo point, I mean, I could address the unit size difference now, or I could have that discussion with the councilmember who's, councilmembers who have concerns later, whatever, whatever your preference is.
Well, if you, if you have that discussion with the councilmembers that have concerns later, what would, what would materialize in the future, I guess, in a, in a public meeting?
Why not just give the explanation? So, I mean, if you wanted the two units to be, you know, significantly different sizes in almost all circumstances, it's going to be much more favorable for that property owner to biggest, build a single-family home and an ADU. That increases the lot coverage. There are less restrictions on the ADUs than there are even on SB9 projects. And so that, that alternative would be available both through an SB9 single-family home project with an ADU, or through the ordinary discretionary, single-family process with an ADU. So there would be very few situations where it would be advantageous for somebody to build two similarly sized, differently, excuse me, differently sized SB9 units on the same project because of the ADU lot.
Got it. Okay. Fair enough. Fair enough. Okay. So, yeah, I think we're in reasonable shape, and you did provide the wrap-up comment opportunity. Councilmember Roy, your hand is still raised. Vice Mayor Chow, as is yours, but let's go ahead and wrap this item. It stands at 8:38. I'm going to go ahead and have us take a five-minute break. Let's return and start up again at 8:45. And before we do that, however, I do have a member of the public requesting oral communications be reopened. That was the gentleman who went ahead and ceded time over to Peggy Griffin, and Peggy used about a minute of that, but then subsequently, there was another member of the public who made a very brief comment, I believe that was Judy Lomis, and said that she was the original owner of Blackberry Farm, and ceded essentially, you know, her time over. So let's just take that, if everyone's okay with it, and give a couple of minutes to that gentleman, I believe it was Don Halsey, if I'm remembering the name correctly. And so, Don, your hand is raised. We'll go ahead and reopen oral communications. Feel free, again, a couple of minutes, and we will go ahead and take your comment. Welcome.
Okay. Thank you. Can everybody hear me?
Yes. You're audible. Welcome.
If somebody had a feeling that they left the ballgame after the sixth inning before, that's correct. We weren't quite finished. Next slide. I'm going to step us ahead to where things got cut off. Next slide. 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 These are the risks, and now we are on my topic. The impact on the outreach survey. You heard from Peggy about changes that probably should have been in the financial information presented, and you heard from Ken about risks that are associated with this. Next slide. This is how it showed on the screen, and people were invited, told about the history of Blackberry Farm, and what it would look like, and some of the things, but little discussion of the risks, and there was the table in there. So people took the survey while not really getting a full picture of the risks. Next slide. And they also got some financial information that favored the natural habitat instead of more correct information that would have favored Blackberry Farm as a golf course. Next slide. Because the survey may have been affected by the limited presentation of risks and the information, financial, that should have perhaps been revised, we think the results of the survey may have been skewed a little bit. And I particularly point out the 57% of Cupertino residents who said they preferred natural habitat. Would they have said that? I don't know. But we also know from the other meetings, 14 people said, in front of the commissions, they wanted like the golf course, and four said they wanted natural habitat. So there's another kind of metric for those of you who are on the council. So I conclude, saying we ask you to vote for keeping the Blackberry Farm golf course for the kids, beginners, and senior golfers, and bear in mind the risks that are there and the revised financial information. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Don. All right. So we are at our break. Let's go ahead and reconvene now at 8:47. We'll see you in about five minutes.